Eric, good evening. I'd like to call the Wednesday, July 17th, 2024 Douglas Plan and Board Meeting to Order. Time is seven o'clock. First up, just go around the table, just announce your name for the attendance. Jacob Schulzberg here.
Meg Schlesman here.
Erin Sokrat here.
Mike DeRose here.
Richard Preston.
Jacob Kinnock here.
Mike Greco here.
All right, and Mr. Zwicker and Mr. Marks are excused. We're going to take something out of order to Ongoing Development, number J, Hawk Hill Farms, lot release, lots two and three, just for a timing with the administrative personnel for it.
Chair, I'm going to...
Okay. All right, Jude, you're up.
Do you say I'm up?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jude Dobbin from OHI Engineering, representing Meg Schlesman, and we're here to ask for two lot releases based on the level of compliance that we have with the road and the bushes and stuff. We have I the Certificate of Occupancy for Lot 5 to the completion of the driveway apron and the planting of the bushes, so there's really nothing else but hold up these other two lot releases. And I believe Matt is wrapped something up to that effect.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, these two lots have existing houses on them. They were part of the subdivision because they were creating new lots on a new roadway, so they will have new addresses forthcoming, but they're two existing homes. They don't need to be part of the covenant as collateral for the road construction. So it's more of a formality. Should have been done earlier on, but now both houses are up for sale. This needs to be done as part of their title. So they need to be released from the covenant.
Ford, any questions? Need a motion?
Yeah, motion for release, slots two and three from the Hawk Hill Farms covenant. Booking page 67450, page 60.
Anyone entertain that?
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Preston, second by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstained or nays? Nope. All right, we'll get that signed for you, Jude.
Thank you very much. Thanks for taking me out of order too. I appreciate it.
All right, enjoy your vacation. Looks like you're somewhere else.
Met your last stadium right now.
All right, better than here.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, and as Ms. Schlesman's coming back to the table, A and R's... It makes sense to take them both at the same time.
There's, yeah, you can take them both.
And the public hearing.
Effectively going to be one.
Okay. All right, so we'll discuss the A and R for 286 Webster Street and also the public hearing for Pine Sand, application for earth removal permit, office building, outdoor storage for 286 Webster Street. Possible votes.
This is a new public hearing, so we need to...
This is an, oh.
Or you can ask the board to waive the reading of the notice and then open up here.
We can do that. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to waive the public hearing reading?
I'll make that motion to waive the reading for the public hearing.
Second.
Made by Mr. Sokrat, second by Ms. Schlesman. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open.
So we're not discussing the A and R plan?
Yeah, we'll do it all in one. Whatever's easiest.
Yeah, I don't know how to explain this A and R.
Sure, sure. So what the board asked at their previous meeting was for the applicant to try to remove the easement that was on the property, right? So what we found out from town council was that you can't move, you can't remove the easement without town meeting vote, okay? But the select board did vote to abandon the use and maintenance of the easement, so it's not going to be used anytime soon. There just needs to be a formal vote at town meeting. Meanwhile, what we have in front of us is an 81p plan because there were two lots bisected by this easement that are now formed together to form one lot, and that's the A and R that's before you.
Okay. Is that something this board will approach town meeting for or with the board of selection?
I think that's something that this board should make a motion to recommend that.
Okay. All right, so we'll take care of the A and R first. So, board, any questions, comments, or concerns with the A and R plan for this?
The one that still shows the easement on combined.
And it's all, all set, Matt?
Yes.
Lines up with everything?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing as no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to endorse the A and R for 286 Webster Street as presented.
So move. I'll second it.
Made by Mr. Preston, second by Mr. DeRose. Any further discussion? That is not, that part's not technically a public hearing, so any further discussion on that? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. All right, so now the public hearing part for the earth removal in office building.
So I'm here with Bill Lever of Casali Engineering. So I think the, I'll turn it over to Bill, but I think the last thing to resolve is to grant it.
If you can just bring that mic a little closer and just speak a little louder. No problem. William Lavery Jr., project manager with Joe Casali Engineering, offices 300 Post Road, Warwick, Rhode Island. Just, my colleague last month gave a overview of the project via PowerPoint. I have that. I'm happy to bring that up if necessary, but I think we were awaiting final peer review comments. We've addressed two rounds of comments with the peer reviewer. The very last two comments, the last two comments that were outstanding on our end were to add some additional spot grades to the plan for the ADA space that was going next to the small office building, which that was completed and submitted back to the town planner and was a drainage concern. Just how we were modeling the overall watersheds coming off the property, we have remodeled it the way the peer reviewer would have suggested, and we've modified the drainage slightly to have two separate outlet control structures dedicated to the two different watersheds, which addressed his concern with some overall rates, larger rates that were coming off of the property.
Okay. It's just been a while. Would you mind bringing up?
No, absolutely.
Give you the sharing ability.
Yeah, I just need to have it.
Do you need to request it first?
Yeah, it's under the William Lavery JCE. There I go. I got it.
It's just been a month since everyone's...
Yeah, no worries. So just quickly running through the project again, 286 Webster Street, Douglas. We just approved the, the board just approved the A and R, merging the two lots, lots two and three together. We are right on the edge of Webster and Douglas with the old Douglas Road that bifurcates the property. Again, here are the two parcels that were just merged a few minutes ago in the industrial and adult entertainment overlay district. Looking further into the parcel, we do have an isolated wetland that does have a 100-foot buffer zone afforded to it, and our project is a overall outdoor storage facility, parking. We do have a auxiliary small office building that would be proposed with auxiliary parking spaces, with one ADA space, and we do have a paved entrance, entryway off of Webster Street. Proposed compacted gravel, dense graded gravel storage area with multiple spaces for any outdoor storage vehicle, RV, boats of the like. The whole entire property will be fenced in, fire department access via an aux box or a key for entry at all times for emergency vehicles, and we are also proposing to plant just for further buffering of the use along the streetscape. We showed this last time. This is again a potential future storage building. It's not anything that's fully proposed on this project, but we just wanted to be a little, show a little foresight for a possibility in the future. Again, this will be serviced, the office will be serviced by a small septic system as well as a private well. Getting into the drainage, we have multiple watersheds coming off the parcel. We are proposing an infiltration basin up in the front western, west, northwestern corner that outlets to a swale on Webster Street, and another proposed infiltration basin going towards the east, towards the eastern property. Just further looking at this, this basin, what we've done to address the peer review comment is, let's go back a little bit. We had one watershed that came all the way down to a point further down in this property. The peer reviewer liked us to model two separate watersheds. If you can see this, one coming off the basin in this general low area and then another one towards this area. And we did that, remodeled it, and we remodeled the outlet control structure, so we no longer have one structure with discharge coming out of the basin. We have one here and we have one on this side pointing towards that low point to split the flow and to completely reduce rates going out towards the property. Also, we were asking for waiver requests from the architectural plan requirement since it's, I think Andy can explain that if needed, with the office building just being a, kind of like a floating building right now where it might not even be necessary to have, and then additional waivers for earth removal, which is pretty associated with the land development project. We've had, I think, our second meeting with the Conservation Commission on Monday night. There were some additional comments made for some additional site soil evaluations closer to the wetland, which I think we've already scheduled for next week to, just they wanted some additional information for the groundwater more towards the wetland area, towards the cut and fills, the end of the site, and we're here for the earth removal and site plan review before the planning department, planning board, and here. Furthermore, we'll need to go before the board of health for the septic system and prior to any building permits.
Mr. Benoit, any comments from your office?
No, I just kind of want to, Kevin Quinn from our peer review consultant is here.
Okay.
Here is Kevin.
Mr. Kevin.
Oh, great.
Here behalf of the planning board, as Angie said, we reviewed, we got a couple rounds of comments. There were two final items remaining to be resolved. I understand the submissions came in this afternoon.
Yes.
And I haven't been able to review it, but it's not rocket science what they need, what they need to do. There's no reason we can't expect that they resolve those two comments.
Okay. With regards to that, Mr. Benoit, how should we approach? Do you think there's enough time to sort it out now or?
I mean, it's right here.
It's really up to the board if they want to render conditional approval pending the final review from the consultant.
Okay.
But I want to go over the waivers, of course.
Yeah. Okay. Board, any questions, comments for the plan project?
Chairman, through you, through the applicant, when you came in to see us last time, I said we were talking about the same project, correct?
Correct.
And at that time, you thought that you would not require any waivers for the earth removal, but obviously it looks like you listed some. Are these, are these waivers having to do with incidental to construction, or why do we have waivers today and we didn't previously?
I think it was addressed, and maybe Matt might have some more history on that, but I think it was part of the major land development process. The grading that takes place on the project is inherent to the project itself and most of the time, you know, approved under the major land development. I think it was out of an abundance of caution. I think we also have on the agenda tonight our approval.
You lost.
We also have an earth, earth removal application on the agenda as well.
I think we'd be asking for a waiver for a bond associated with an earth removal permit because it's a permanent project, and as far as reling, we'd be reling any slopes that we have, so I don't know how to address that.
Could you bring up, if I might, the waivers, you had listed them in your presentation?
So the first one's the architectural plan for the building because our intent is to do everything remotely, so if we chose to put a building out to be a future endeavor.
May I ask in regards to that?
Yeah, well, it's on.
Through the chair. So future endeavor fine, but you'll come back to us.
Yeah.
And then you'll go to, you know, you're going to have permits and all that. You'll have architectural engineering drums then, but right now for your approval at this point, you're asking for a waiver of the submission of a building because you don't know where you're going to put it or what you're going to do.
Correct.
I just wanted to sort of...
Or if you're even going to utilize a building.
Right. So when the earth's removal, I think the earth removal bylaws read 100 feet from a public way, you can't remove earth, you know, and the earth removal within 100 feet of a wetland.
Correct.
We're actually, I think we're going to be 50 feet from a non-jurisdictional wetland with the state, but the Douglas Conservation has jurisdiction over it. They were fine with what we did Monday night when we met with them, and earth removal with the 10 feet of the seasonal high groundwater because...
It's always, yeah.
You know, and a lot of these earth removal requirements are really, in my opinion, a function of a gravel pit and designed to protect the butters and the land in a earth removal operation. So if we were doing, I mean, a gravel pit, we would not be requesting a...
I think we really were requesting out of an abundance of caution, saying should they necessitate, but we feel that the land development project, process, you know, covers this, these actions.
Yeah, it's kind of, once a site plan is approved, you have to remove the earth, but in Douglas, you still have to come for an earth removal. So it's, it's kind of assumed that once you have the site plan, you should have the earth removal, if that makes sense.
Mr. Benoit, are you able to confirm the conservation was fine with?
Until the conservation issues in order.
Okay, it's unofficial, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. I understand there's still some test holes that need to be done.
Okay.
Yeah, we're digging three test holes in the area of the non-jurisdictional wetland, and I know it's ledged there, but just to prove that I'm that it's ledged and it won't drain the non-jurisdictional, which is, I think, smaller than this table.
Okay.
It's just something they requested that we agreed.
Any follow-up, Mr. Preston, on that?
No, I'm...
Okay.
Thank you.
Board, any other comments, questions?
We don't have any waivers with our submitting. You guys submit that on the plan? Yeah, it's on the plan.
While you're looking for that, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience with any comments or questions regards to this project 286 Webster Street? No one in the audience here. Anyone online? I'll give it a minute.
It's on, yeah, it's on the site plan, page four of seven. It was highlighted under the...
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And it was addressed in one of the, in the spots to comment, June 10th. The June 10th peer review comments.
You want to just go through those?
Sure. So the late request, the request for a bond with, I'm not in that, I think that once the site is constructed according to the plan, the board could have no issue releasing the bond. I think we're looking for like a restoration bond here. They were just looking for the site to be constructed in accordance with the plan.
Do we find, okay.
I don't think we're looking for restoration.
Excuse me, through the chair, Matt, you're very soft spoken.
Sorry.
We want to hear a bated breath.
My fourth consecutive evening meeting, so. Yeah, so it's just like a, a construction bond that, that once it's completed, the bond can be released, requested. I think that's fair. Does the waiver within 100 feet of public way, I mean, in order to build the driveway in, I would assume you have to take some earth out, right, and then bring it to, is it the property line or the, the right of?
Public way slash property line.
Okay, so probably the property line. So we're coming up against, I don't know what's in Webster on that side, but you got State Forest on the other side, no direct to butters on either side, I don't think. That's usually the reason for that waiver, so you're not impacting the butters. We don't have any butters on either side here. Don't have any issues with that waiver.
And I think it's a telecommunications facility next door.
Right. The 100 foot of a wetland, I feel like we need Concom sign off on that before we to grant that, in my opinion. And then within the 10 feet of the standard high groundwater, that's typically in here for septic systems. That's not the point of this, of this type of, the architectural plan running for site plan is pretty common. We don't usually get architectural runnings with our site plans anyway.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So you'll come up with some numbers for the bond?
Come up with Matt.
Yep.
That's no issue. That could be done after the fact.
Okay.
It just depends on how the board feels about the peer review and the comments there and if...
We're still waiting for Concom too, so.
Yeah, I think so. We need to wait for Concom to sign off to get the peer review consulting time to respond to the last letter. Make sure that all those things are plugged out.
Yeah. Makes sense just to continue and get everything, all the ducks in a row and do one final vote on that.
Right. At that time, you could even submit the bond estimate. Get that reviewed by the consultant during the process, as that works.
Okay.
Board, anything else?
Yeah.
All right, so with that...
So our, so our meeting is before the next conservation meeting.
But?
Planning boards before Concom. It's four days, right. Concom meets tonight, I think we need to pick.
So you can't do it subject to the conservation?
If we get some, something from our consultant, from Concom, that's favorable, we might be able to act on that on the 15th, if everything's in order in his opinion. Before Concom votes, you might be able to get a conditional vote out of us, and then we could draft our decision concurrently with theirs. That could work.
It's that one minor thing, it shouldn't be an issue, but just in case. Yeah, so we'll continue to the next meeting and hopefully we can have some better answers and at least a conditional.
Wait.
All right.
Yep.
All right, so with that, I will...
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 286 Webster Street 2, August 14th at, Wednesday, August 14th.
You're right, 14th, okay.
August 14th is the meeting?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
For 7:15, so August 14th, Wednesday, 7:15. I'll entertain that motion.
Make a motion.
Second. All right, motion made by Ms. Schlesman, second by Mr. Sokrat. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, unanimous. It is continued.
Chairman, I have a question, if I could.
Yes, sir.
If we appropriate enough, but maybe let the board know to bring this with us so Jen doesn't have to do all this again.
That would be very helpful.
Save a couple trees anyway.
Definitely a lead mine, so.
Take a second to get organized.
Say it. I didn't see that. Say it. A new hearing and also a continued.
Yep. So just take a motion to continue that one also.
Okay. So there was two hearings with that, so I'll just entertain a motion to, so there was the new public hearing for earth removal permit, office building. We took care of that, and then there are continued hearing for the site plan review, same time, same date, same time.
Make a motion.
Second. Made by Ms. Schlesman, second by Mr. Sokrat. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Which one, Mr. Benoit?
Would you like to take the BB Logistics discussion? Should be a pretty quick one.
The, which one? All right, so I'm just trying to find it on the agenda. Is the?
Discussion B, 3B.
Okay, discussion. For, Discussion B, Blackstone Valley Logistics Modification. Mr. Benoit.
So we should have Joe Wisner on to talk about this?
Yes, I'm on here.
All right, so just name and affiliation, please, for them. Don't take her.
Joe Wisner with Alston Construction, be the general contractor for the project.
Okay. And if you can talk to us about what's going on.
Yeah, if I can, I'm going to share my screen here. It won't let me share. So what we're looking for is approval on minor site modifications.
Joey, you should be able to share your screen now. Go ahead.
What's that?
You should be able to share your screen now. Go ahead.
We're looking for approval on minor site modifications to the existing warehouse at 40 Lackey Dam Road. Our plan shows site fencing going around the west side truckport. We also have six dock doors that are going to be converted into van doors. Are you able to see the drawing here?
If you're able, Joe, if you're able to point out, um, where on that these changes are.
Say that again?
If you're able to point out on your drawing where these changes are, please.
Yes, so we would be adding the site fencing that continues all the way around this west half of the building, around the truck court here. And I'll, I'll get to the second page that shows the southern half of the building. And then, this is that new van ramp where we're converting those six dock doors to van doors. So, this would be a concrete approach ramp to those doors.
That's in Sutton.
We show the emergency backup generator that we would be adding.
Yeah, we're just looking for what's in Douglas, Joe, please. Just looking for what's in...
On the east side of the building, we're just...
Joe, Joe, we're just looking for what's in Douglas. You're showing us the changes in Sutton. All we need to see are the changes in Douglas. It's the gate and the, the, the switchgear gate, the dumpster enclosure, and that's it. That's, that's really all we're looking, a couple of, uh...
And the fencing.
Lighting fixture and some of the fencing.
Yep, we'll have upgraded lighting fixtures along here, this fence that continues from the north side. And on the southern half of the building, the fence continues down to sliding gates that close off the truck court area. This is our dumpster enclosure that we're adding here. And then, for your portion of it, this section of the outdoor break area.
They're all minor changes from the tenant fit out that's going into the building. That's really all we're looking at here. Obviously, there's a lot more changes for the site, but those aren't in our jurisdiction. These are very minor, and we just need a formal vote to declare them minor.
Okay. Um, I know there's three towns involved.
Yes.
Anything gonna impact any other towns or anything gonna impact us? It's all just...
The changes for them to vote on. Shouldn't change the overall site plan.
Okay. All right, board, any questions on that?
No.
All right, so, um, I need to get peer reviewed, and, no, it's all good. All right. Uh, so with that, I'll entertain the motion, if the board pleases, to endorse the minor modifications to Blackstone Valley Logistics, 40 Lackey Dam Road as presented.
I would do that. I would make that motion to approve these minor modifications that are indicated as being in Douglas that we have reviewed to be minor and approve that.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Socrat. Secondly, Mr. Preston, any further discussion? Seeing as none.
Jeremy Flansworth, 63 Monroe Street. I have no problems with it, but from a public safety perspective, has this been run across all three towns' fire chiefs?
They have to do that on their own.
It's a generator, and usually they're run on propane or diesel.
Just let them, let them talk. Okay. Um, so the, the generator part was in Sutton, so they'll have to go to Sutton for whatever permits or whatnot, so, um, I'm sure that all the community development departments are in communication with who they need to be.
Yes.
I, I worked for the city of Wisner.
It's been submitted to all three townships.
Okay.
This comes up all the time.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, so let's do, um... It should be a quick discussion. Um, discussion for Perry Street Extension Road Improvements. Mr. Bettencourt?
Yes.
His name and, uh, address and affiliation.
Chris Bettencourt, 41 Mystic Valley Lane, Oxbridge, Mass.
Okay.
Well, also Kevin Demarest from Dupree Engineering is here as well.
Okay.
And Matthew Wozgieris, counsel.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, what we have here is, um, so we talked to Town Council about this, and because this is a private road improvement, this doesn't need to come to the planning board. But because the intent is to bring this to a public road standard, the applicant is, is requesting feedback from the planning board at this time for any things that they might like to see in this private way. Again, there is no filing for this. This is not something that has to come before us because it's, it's a way, that it's a private way, and private road owners have the ability to improve the roadways as, if they own the way. So, I think Mr. Bettencourt is working on a deed to prove his ownership of this entire way. And once that's finalized, he could, he could do this as he pleases. But it's respectful to come to the planning board now and ask for our feedback on future public roadway, if this is to become a public road and what sort of standards we can expect.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair.
All right. Chris, have you spoken to the highway department, highway superintendent, about any of their feedback of what they would like?
Yes, we've had several closed-door meetings with planning board and, uh, Matt...
Not planning board. Yeah, you haven't had any closed doors discussions with us.
Uh, Matt, Matt Benoit, Matt Wojcik, Adam, Mike Fitzpatrick. There were a few of us in the room, and there were several different items that came up, and this was one of them.
Okay.
So, apparently, I've inherited a age-old problem...
Yes.
...from the previous owner. And I'm willing to, um, do the repairs that are requested, specifically on Perry Hill, I call it Perry Street Hill. Um, there's washout on every major storm.
Yes.
And I, I've decided that I could put an infiltration basin on my land to pick up the water runoff and install a drainage system. Um, there's some granite that's protruding, protruding out of the roadway, which I will hammer out and swale the, the right-hand side going down the hill to pick up all the drainage water and put into the infiltration basin. It's been designed by Dupree Engineering, and it, I believe Matt Benoit has a copy of some preliminary that we've been doing. Everything's been using, you know, calculations. It's, it's not, like I said, no, you only have this much room. It's how much room do you need to make this right? So, that's our first intent, and we do plan on going through conservation to go over the bridge or the, the wetland crossing and continue on Perry Street all the way to the other side, which is 6,200 feet. So, it's major work. I don't expect that I'm going to do it all at once. It's gonna go in phases. I don't wanna finance it. I wanna do it out of pocket, and I need to continue with my project in order to be able to do that.
Okay. Do you have an end goal of surface?
Well, right now, it's two rods wide...
Yeah.
...which is 28 feet, and, um...
Or what asphalt are you looking to do?
Well, first thing we're gonna do is, we're gonna put regrind down and compact it, and then continue down the road so that, you know, we can see what's happening with the runoff, with the drainage, and we have the ability to dig it back up or change it if need be. Um, when it's all said and done, I left the discussion open for putting a binder coat on it. I just didn't wanna commit to it at this point in time. If, if the town says that I've done a good job and they're gonna take it over from me, then we can negotiate that to put a binder coat on it before you take it over.
Mr. Chair, through the chair, if I may, just, this is exciting, potentially. Where are we going with this? If it's a private way, which I live on while you're here, but we wanna hear about the bigger news, is this gonna feed something else down the way? Is there, I mean, I want you to do it right...
Yeah.
...and be set up right.
Yeah.
You can't just put some paving down on 28 feet and expect the town to take it as public way. There's standards, right? We have standards. Tell me if I'm wrong, is there standards for roads to be accepted? Has, has your engineer looked into the standards of the town? Corb one side, this and that, catch basins and everything, so that you're set up right for whatever you're gonna do in the future? We want you to be successful. So, I think we should have that conversation, or what does this lead to? I don't want you to do piecemeal here.
Okay.
You know, so I, I put it on the table.
Okay.
If that's something you wanna talk about, put it on the table.
Okay, so, you know, it's a big project. It's 512 acres.
Oh, yeah.
Um, you know, when I first came to the town with this, I, my plan was to build A and R lots and try to recoup my investment, and then Perry Street has come to the surface on every single meeting. It's very important to the town, I understand that. I've agreed to invest into Perry Street to create a better scenario than what's there. Um, going into the future, we have, um, plans to use the interior of the 275 acres on the north side of Perry Street to create a subdivision with 40 or so lots, 47 maybe. Um, we have provisions to come out onto Northeast Main Street between lots one and two, and to come out on the Orange Street between, on lot 12.
Orange Street.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's what's on the, on the planning table right now, okay? So, if you're asking if I have an overall for everything, I'm gonna give you my ideas because my ideas have changed and molded in accordance with discussions with the town on what they would like to see. So, initially, we talked about putting an over 55 up in that area, and it was discussed that it may not be advantageous to have it in that section of town. So, I scrubbed it. So, going with, um, you know, higher-end homes is what I'm trying to do, and, and, and I'm going to make the interior of that area.
Through the, through the, through the chair. This is great to hear.
I just don't, I don't wanna get too far into the future.
Right, I don't wanna get into that. I want to talk about the road.
Yes.
So, my premise is if you're developing some lots here, which is your right to do...
Yeah.
Private way or otherwise, A and Rs or whatever.
Yeah.
If this is the gateway...
Yeah.
Look at the standards.
Yeah.
Make the standard here, you don't have to go 6,200 feet if you're not doing anything down there yet.
Yeah.
But don't start, I wouldn't start anything here unless you do it right.
Yeah.
This is my take on it, right? I mean, I think...
So, so that's the exact reason why I'm sitting before you today. Okay, we've had these discussions back and forth about, you know, how far we're gonna take it. Now, it, you know, there are sections of Perry Street where I own both sides of the street, and without having a map in front of me, there's a potential of 33 lots on Perry Street additional. So, if, if, you know, I'm able to do that on Perry Street, then I will be able to invest more into the road, and so it's like a, it, I mean, how do you progress from zero to here? You have discussions about it. You, you give ideas, you look for comment, you look for rebuttal. I, I've had engineers putting different types of drawings in front of the town off record to see what we wanna present as, as a standard. So, right now, we're trying to produce what the standard is. So, without feedback, I don't get the standard.
The standard is the accepted roads of the public way.
Okay.
Is that the standard that we have?
Absolutely.
If you want an accepted road, it has to be brought up to standards with limited to no waivers, because that, waivers are waivers. And, I mean, I'm not the champion either way of this. I mean, I want good projects, and I want you to be, and I want the town to be successful. But where do you start? And just, let's have that discussion, because I think you should start from scratch, right from there. But that's just me, so...
Um, just my thought is, if this is gonna go to town and town votes to accept it, I don't want the town to have to pour forward any money for maintenance for a very long time.
Right.
So, if it's, you know, that, that road gets washed out, the town has to go in there with a grader every once in a while for emergency purposes only.
And that was the idea, why we would wait a couple of years to make sure that everything was okay.
Yeah.
So, if, if we agree that I can do this, then I know that I will have X amount of dollars' worth of income that I can invest back into the road, then this is a standard conversation that every town should have with people that are coming in doing development so that we can arrive where we need to arrive and do it right the first time.
Just with all the issues we've had with stormwater in town...
Yeah.
...I just don't see the town really being favorable excepting a gravel road.
Okay.
It is not gonna happen. Right. I mean, that's just not an accepted road.
Okay.
Right. I mean, keep it private way.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're here to discuss this.
Yeah.
All right, so the discussions that we've had so far were that, you know, just what I said, that I, I'm going to regrade everything if I need to put in swales, if I need to put in infiltration basins along the way, that will be determined by the engineers, and I'm going to just do it. It's not gonna be an argument by me, but, you know, we can't build 495. We need to just find out what's going to be accepted and go along that path, knowing what the result is gonna be.
And ultimately, you're gonna need the blessing of the highway super and the selectmen as the road commissioner.
Correct. Correct.
Who do we...
How's the board feel about sidewalks?
About what?
Sidewalks. How's the board feel about that? I don't know if we have the sort of width with the right of way.
Not for A and Rs. I mean, if it's just a few A and Rs, but if it's leading to a development, yes, one side sidewalk. The, the same as we've done for other directions.
Right.
You know, it has to be, it's, it's your choice.
And I'd also like to, I don't know if you've spoken to the people who do live on that road now, if they have any thoughts.
A few people have stopped by and...
Yeah.
...made comments to me, and, and most of them are, it's about time.
Yeah, 'cause it's their road at the end of the day. They're, they're the ones that see it every day and...
Yeah.
...wanna satisfy them...
Right.
...the most, but also the time.
So, so right now, um, you know, the gravel is 28 to 30 feet, uh, existing, and, you know, does it make sense to open it up to 32? I mean, what are we looking for here?
All right, wait. Excuse me, I'm gonna say it one more time. If you want an accepted road and the town to take it over and plow a section of it or whatever, you gotta bring it to the standard. We have standards, your engineers, it's in the file, it's in the, we have standards.
Yeah, but there's some things in here that I'm sure that this board wouldn't mind waving, like grass strips in between sidewalks.
Yeah, 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 we've done that.
Street trees on both sides.
Street trees, we know Ernie brought that up because of plowing. But sidewalk one side, if it goes to a development...
Right.
If it's just in front of A and R lots, but I don't wanna accept that, if it becomes public way. Public way has some standards, and we have to, the width...
Right.
...really important.
Yeah, 'cause I know there's some curves.
Why are you discussing? I mean, there's a standard.
Yeah, there's some curves on that road too, so if you bring it down or keep it below the standard, like, where's the snow gonna go? I know that's gonna be a comment from Mr. Swicker, so...
Yeah, there was one, um, discussion about that hairpin turn that I could easily straighten out.
Yeah.
I'd have to move a couple of telephone poles, but it goes direct, it would go directly through one of my lots, which is fine. And the road just moves, so I don't think that's an issue. Um, that Matt Wojcik made that request to get rid of that. The other thing was to make sure that we can have, um, you know, whatever highway vehicles and fire department vehicles safely be able to, you know, work on that road. Um, you know, what are we gonna do on the south side of Perry? We're discussing trying to go... does it make sense to open it up to 32? I mean, what are we looking for here?
All right, wait. Excuse me, I'm gonna say it one more time. If you want an accepted road, and the town to take it over and plow a section of it or whatever, you gotta bring it to the standard. We have standards, your engineers, it's in the, it's in the, we have standards.
Yeah, but there's some things in here that I'm sure that this board wouldn't mind waving, like grass strips in between sidewalks.
Yeah, 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 we've done that.
Street trees on both sides.
Street trees, we know Ernie brought that up because of plowing. But sidewalk one side, if it goes to a development.
Right.
If it's just in front of A and R lots, but I don't want to accept that, if it becomes public way. Public way has some standards, and we have to, the width.
Right.
Really important.
Because I know there's some curves.
Why are you discussing? I mean, there's a standard.
Yeah, there's some curves on that road too, so if you bring it down or keep it below the standard, like where's the snow gonna go? I know that's gonna be a comment from Mr. Swicker, so.
Yeah, there was one discussion about that hairpin turn that I could easily straighten out.
Yeah.
I'd have to move a couple of telephone poles, but it goes direct, it would go directly through one of my lots, which is fine. And the road just moves, so I don't think that's an issue. That Matt Wojcik made that request to get rid of that. The other thing was to make sure that we can have, you know, whatever highway vehicles and fire department vehicles safely be able to, you know, work on that road. You know, what are we gonna do on the south side of Perry? We're discussing trying to go with an equestrian theme, and I want the interior of the 285 acres, 75 acres to the north of Perry to start to have that theme by, you know, putting in a horse stable or, you know, having a grooming area and having trails in there that people can ride. And then possibly on the south side, making some type of a paddock indoor, you know, horse arena or something like that, where people can, you know, use, exercise their horses, train their horses, have maybe competitions or something like that. So, you know, that's in the works, but in order to be able to get there, I need to have success along the road to get there. So I agree, I don't want to do Perry Street twice, I don't want to have to do that, but I need to be able to afford to build that into the project. So, you know, the, the standards of what it is has been kicked back and forth, and, you know, I invited Mr. Watzke because he had a lot of insight, and he brought some ideas to the table, and I wanted him to listen in in case he wanted to weigh in on any of these items.
Mr. Watzke?
He's my attorney.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but.
I didn't know.
Yeah, but he's well-versed in it, so I just thought that if he could offer anything, he's at everybody's disposal tonight to help answer any questions. So, you know, I'm not trying to be restrictive. I'm here to ask for input, and it'll be given to DePreet. Kevin's here from DePreet, and they will put it pen to paper and then make a submission. So I think one of the discussions was that there's, you know, somewhere between a state-spec road and, and where we are today, that's gonna satisfy the board and the town to take it over one day. I'm not opposed to putting in a sidewalk with a Cape Cod berm. What I didn't want to do was to create a drainage issue that becomes larger than life, and now all of a sudden I'm blasting ledge and putting in structures in the middle of the road and creating retention ponds and, you know, disrupting the whole area. So, you know, where do we land, is, I guess, is the question.
Mr. Chair again, I know I've seen the need a lot, I'm sorry. So what I would think, is my background plan a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so why don't you do your layouts for public way for future accepted road? Take the land before you start to convey these lots, these A and Rs, because I'm sure you have some latitude. Make sure you take everything that you need.
Yeah.
Keep it as a private for now. Recoup your money.
Yeah.
Put it in your pocket for the future, and then when you're ready to go here, you've already got the layouts in this area for our public way, not state, but town of Douglas.
Yeah.
Make sure you've got plenty, and then you can work within that. But don't, don't convey your lots, and then you don't have the land.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not my intent.
Right, right, no, I, I just think if I was just working with my client, I'd be doing the same thing. Make sure you have everything you need for the future to do the accepted roads.
Right.
Even though you don't have the money right now, but you've got these other lots to sell. You keep it as private and sell them. I don't, maybe that's what you're doing on ours.
Hi. Good, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Through you with the applicant.
If I may, wait, if I may weigh in, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Watzke.
Are you fine with it?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, yeah, please.
Okay, thank you. So there were, there were really two questions, and Chris has, Chris has expressed the first one, I think, really quite well, and that's about the hope that long-term the road would be accepted. In preliminary conversations that we've had with, with a number of town officials, the concern about, Chris getting started with A and R lots on this existing private way that's open to public passage, those concerns were expressed, that there are specific sections of the road that ought to be upgraded before the, the officials would feel comfortable having A and R approvals granted on them, so that they're, they're reliably passable and aren't going to be subject to gullies forming during storms. And so Chris, oh, excuse me, Chris, Chris is prepared to make those improvements rather than argue about whether there's actual practical access already provided by the road. He would be willing to make the improvements to the private way at his expense so that there be no argument about the A and R lots. So I think what we'd be looking for is, is, is whether the conceptual improvements that Kevin Demers has, has drawn a plan for would satisfy the planning board's concerns about the improvements, this, all of the temporary improvements to the, to the existing traveled way, so that A and R approvals could be granted. I love the chair's idea that we, that when, when those A and R lots are, are proposed for development, that we actually come in and seek, oh, excuse me, seek a modification of lot lines to create the full standard with town right-of-way, so that in the future, the, the full right-of-way consistent with the town's standard for acceptance, that could be met. Honestly, I don't think we'd considered that previously, so it's a great, great insight that's been provided. But I think what would be really helpful tonight is, is if Kevin could do a brief presentation on the, this first quality interim step of the improvements to the traveled way, just so that construction, building permits could be pulled for, for each of the existing lots. And I would suggest that before those lots are actually sold, that we, that we plan consistent with what the chair just suggested, to come in with A and R, A and R applications to have the lot lines changed to create the full width right-of-way.
I just, I don't know how in-depth I want to go. It's just on for a simple discussion. We have a lot of other stuff to attend to tonight. Because ultimately, when you come to an A and R, for an A and R release, we get the blessing from the town of, the highway superintendent for their, you know, yes, that we bless this road as safe and passable, so we rely on their expertise for that.
As a private way, not particularly as an accepted road.
Right.
Even a private way.
That's right, and we've had conversations with the DPW about, about the proposed improvements to the road, to have exactly that kind of input.
Okay. Yeah, and I would just work towards, you know, in the future, if you want the town to accept it, to make sure it's right, and the town was, be jumping out the door to accept it.
Okay.
You know, you're a smart guy, I'm sure you did your research, you knew this was a private way, and you probably had some work to do, so.
Well, when I.
That's right.
Yeah, when I, when I bought the land, I didn't know about the Hat Rocks and the McCoys until I bought it. So, you know, I'm trying to work.
And they're all on this board, you know?
Well, yeah, well, whatever it is, I, you know, I come here hat in hand, you know, I'm.
No, we're, we're all working together.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking for insight so that I can move forward. It's not something I'm gonna start tomorrow, but I need to budget certain things, and, you know, it, one of the main concerns is that every time it rains, Perry Hill washes into the wetlands. I could fix that pretty easily and at least alleviate that problem. And so going in sections, maybe 1,000 feet at a time, Wetland Conservation Commission approvals required is gonna slow down certain areas, but if I could get down to the buffer zone and then start at the buffer zone, keep going while we're waiting for approvals, I'm willing to go in that fashion and have it regraded and compacted so that it's, it's better than it is now substantially.
Yes.
And as far as me leaving extra room on the lots, by all means. You know, I, if, if, if I could, I'd be, you know, making a beautiful road with stone walls and, you know, that's my.
Give yourself the room. Just give yourself the room now on paper with your engineer. That doesn't cost you anything other than engineering.
Right, so there's, there's homes that are existing on that road, so I can't go into their yards. I would have to, the road is gonna have to turn a little or offset so that whatever increases are, are on the other side of the road. We understand that. So do we have enough information, Kevin, to move forward with something here?
You can come back too. You can come, ask to be on the agenda anytime for a discussion.
Okay.
So I hope we gave you enough insight for now.
Right, that's, that's what I'm asking. Kevin, do you, do you need any other questions answered for you to take this the rest of the way?
I think, I think as, as you got into, Chris, this is a matter of, there's going to need to be an interim step to, to provide adequate passage and drainage for this, for this public road, as it were, and then follow up with the, the lot adjustments to enable us to do, to make this a public way in the future. You know, as, as to the current state, we're proposing to widen the road to make it passable by two, you know, two vehicles, have a superlative crossloop in order to provide drainage to the roadside swale, just so it avoids that, there's one on the crown on the road and the water wants to, you know, go parallel to the roadway rather than perpendicular and to a, to a drainage, drainage swale. So we'd be providing that and a B and P at the end of this Perry Hill section. And obviously, as, you know, as we proceed down, down the road, there will be, you know, suited-to-fit options for, for drainage and so forth, depending on the frontage, frontage of butters present, you know, what, what lots Mr. McCorr has available along the frontage of Perry Street. But I think, I think that's the, that's a sound approach is, is going with the temporary fix. You know, that would be acceptable to the, to the highway department in order to get the A and R lots with, as we, as we proceed down roadway, you know, adjust the A and Rs as appropriate to provide for the right way width to get a permanent road in that future date.
Okay, so I think he captured what you guys said.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And with the A and Rs, it sounds like you know, some adjustments need to be made to the road to make it better and safer.
Yeah.
So.
All right, so we'll come back again with a more definitive drawing that, you know, will circulate first, if anybody has input before we have a.
It's, you're in a tough spot because it's a private way, so you're gonna have all different boards and departments chiming in, so.
Yeah, which is fine.
Yeah.
Because I'd rather know now than do something and then have somebody go against it. So this is everybody's opportunity to have some input on what I'm gonna do before I do it, and, and I'm not doing it for me, I'm doing it for you. Right? The town, I mean.
Both ways, right?
Well, I mean, of, of course, but, you know, I'm giving it to the town, so, you know.
And it has to be at the standards, especially, if it's gonna be that.
Right.
Public way, but.
Right.
Well, I mean, we're not talking grass strips and street trees.
No. We're not that kind of town.
Yeah.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. President.
Through you to the applicant. So ultimately, you may do a subdivision of Perry Street, about 40 lots, you said?
Yeah.
And have you done a subdivision in town before?
In Uxbridge.
In this town?
Oh, in this town, no.
Do you have a copy of the subdivision rules and regulations?
Yes.
Have you read them?
I've been reading them.
Read them.
Yeah.
That's the gold standard. I'm not being facetious, read them.
Yeah.
That's the gold standard, and then we can sort of have a discussion, kind of come back from that.
Right.
I don't think anyone's necessarily looking for that.
Yeah.
But that'll give you a nice solid foundation on what you propose versus what we would like to see.
Right, right.
Can you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I do. And, and, you know, I, I've been trying to hire the, the professionals that know what they're doing, that are respected in the community, and overlaying them, and so that way, if one has an opinion, it washes out in our weekly meetings, also running things by the town to see if we're on the same path and make the adjustments according to what the town wants, so that when we come to the surface, we have a better understanding what's feasible, what isn't feasible, and whatever's feasible needs to be done to a certain level, and then we'll go down that path. I do have the integrity to do a good job here, and I hope I get a chance to prove myself.
Good, exciting.
Okay.
We like horses.
My, my son is into horses, so he got me started on this. So anyway, if there's any other questions, I'm here. Otherwise, I'll, I'll try to have something new, you know, periodically so that we're heading somewhere.
Yeah, and you can get on the agenda, we can talk.
Okay. All right, great. Are we all set?
All right.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chris.
All right. Public hearing continued for McIntyre Lumen Corporation. Application for a special permit, SP-240416. Earth removal permit, ER-240416. Site plan review, SPR-240416. Outdoor manufacturing and processing, off legacy circle, possible votes.
Don't know if you'd like to introduce yourself and get us started?
John Palmer, McIntyre Lumen.
Thomas McIntyre, McIntyre Lumen.
Good evening, Mike Dray, I'm Senior Project Manager with Alan Engineer.
All right, can you just catch us up to speed on what's, what's happened in, in two months, right?
Since May 22nd.
Okay.
This is the third meeting.
You want me to go?
Yeah, yeah, if you can just catch us up to speed on what's going on.
So since the last meeting, there's been some email back and forth with Matt on a number of issues. I have a list of like six items that I'd like to touch on. Obviously, peer review has been ongoing. Just today, we received peer review on the site civil side as well as for the sound study, the initial sound study that was put forth. I'd like to talk a little bit about that. I have some house, what I'll call housekeeping items that, that have come up during the process that I think are very minor in nature. We just need to kind of go through those and check those boxes. So I can go right into my list if you like.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that.
Okay. So one of the easy, I guess, starting with the easier items, the back and forth that we had with Matt, there was apparently an error with the assessors, I'm not sure exactly what happened there, but there was a question of ownership, and of course McIntyre owns this lot. So what I have here that I can give you, I think you already received, is the deed that grants to six legacy circle, and then lot six is referenced in the deed, and it referenced this set of subdivision drawings. So the, the ownership is clear, I'm not sure what happened in terms of how that translated to the town's records, but that one's easy. We also got word through Matt from Town Council. If you recall, one of our waivers was relative to the offset of the work to the abutting land in Uxbridge. Town Council determined that we do not need to request a waiver for that, so we can strike that from the list of waivers.
Town boundary doesn't serve as a property, in case.
Okay.
It's common ownership.
Number three on my list was the frontage on legacy circle. So as I, as we discussed at the last meeting, the lot six, which fronts with 150 feet of frontage on legacy circle, is under common ownership. It's not technically part of this project, no, no new work is being done on lot six, but it's contiguous. So the frontage that we have here is 150 feet on legacy circle, so I just wanted to make that clear so that everybody understands. I think it may have been brought up by one of the abutters.
Yeah. That makes, that makes sense, Matt?
Yes.
Okay.
The site civil peer review, again, which we just received today from Graves, I think we've reconciled the majority of the comments. There are three, I think, three items that I just want to go through quickly. I assume that we don't need to talk about the items that are reconciled, only those that are outstanding.
Yeah.
So on the first page, this is a document dated July 17th, item number one at the bottom of the page. Let me just read it again. So this is, it's relative to restoration, so what Graves is saying is we did revise to identify areas of permanent stabilization. That's about 2.35 acres. That includes swales, detention basins, and the slopes, and I think everybody's in agreement with that, but what Graves is saying here is nevertheless, it is inevitable that the aggregate processing operation will be. it is inevitable that the aggregate processing operation will be moved to a new location. I'm not really sure why they're saying that. That's certainly not the case. As we've discussed many times, this is intended to be a permanent operation. But what they're leading up to here is that their recommendation is to, for the board to consider a condition that, I guess I'll paraphrase here, if and ever this aggregate processing operation permanently ceases, that it would be restored. As we've discussed previously, we've asked for waivers for full restoration. This is a unique project. There are no buildings. We have asked for site plan approval, but in this case, it's just to create a level surface. And again, all the slopes, the swales, the detention basins would be restored, but the gravel floor, as we've been calling it, would not. So any, happy to answer any questions? I just wanted to make sure that Graves fully understood, as outlined in our narrative, what the intent here is.
Board, any questions on that? Matt, any input on that?
Jeff is on someone.
Jeff? One second.
Can you hear me up?
Yeah.
Everybody hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay, thank you. We have a little trouble with the clicking, being able to click things around the perimeter by screen. Jeff Walsh, Graves Engineering, peer reviewer for this project. I fully appreciate and understood Mr. Dryden's response, and I understand if their intention is to stay here, keep the equipment here in perpetuity, that was my read on response. I was, quite frankly, just a little surprised because my understanding of the aggregate processing industry is that it, it doesn't move around a lot, but at some point where the source material is farther, you gotta bring it in and it gets to be a farther distance, inevitably, the equipment's packed up and moved along somewhere else, just, just like I, I understand they'd be moving from the operation they have now at legacy circle, closer to legacy circle, onto this part of the lot. And probably many years, but nevertheless, away there we go, to another facility, maybe nearby, closer to the source material. And the reason I put this comment in there, comment in here to stabilize, this is a little different than a housing project or a personal development project when the ground surfaces are stabilized by impervious cover or buildings or vegetative cover. This is left unstabilized because it's always being worked upon with earth materials, rock, soil, what have you. But when the process stops, when the equipment goes away, you don't have impervious surfaces, abandoned buildings, or weedy growth growing up with the lawns that are no longer kept. You've got a soil surface, if you will, that's gonna be prone to erosion. In my experience with a number of communities about older gravel pits and rock processing places, getting them stabilized between that point and when the lands finally get developed can be a struggle with the towns. So I thought a simple condition, if and when the processing stopped and the equipment were moved out of there, it would be appropriate to condition the permanent stabilization of those, that floor service be achieved. That's it, Board.
Okay. Any follow-up, Board, on that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
When you say all the equipment or activity ceases, what's the timeframe on that? Are we able to go elsewhere for a few months and come back? Or does that stabilize load on? Like there, to his point, you know, we do go other places to crush, but we don't typically home those other slots or process materials, but we do go there, process, and bring back and stockpile. That's happened plenty of times. Probably to us owning this property, but, you know, when we're over on Northeast Main Street, that's how it works. We would process elsewhere, bring in, you know, stockpile, and then reprocess on that.
So you're looking to see what the trigger would be to?
What would be the trigger that the condition would be met?
And if I may add, Mr. Chairman, when we do that, processing-wise, we still would be using the land in wholesaling, distribution, and warehousing, you know, by right uses. So if there were no processing at that moment, there would be other uses going on there.
So that'd be some of your research, or? I don't know, but that's a good question.
It is, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My thought is when the overall earth processing use of the land ceases, I realize this could be seasonal shutdowns. I'm not anticipating stabilization for seasonal shutdowns. There's other ways to stabilize the facility such as that for a few months. I can appreciate, yeah, maybe they'll shut down for a year or two and collect material and then start the process up again. My, my vision is that when, during temporary shutdowns, there's ways to, to use some temporary best management practices, you know, waiting from stone to stone, check dams or something else, to manage the site and still allow traffic to come and go and material accumulation to occur. It's my concern when I see a, a site that's, again, no longer intended to be used for earth processing or earth removal, and the equipment's been mobilized and it's just sitting there, and we're all hoping the weeds grow in, in the soil aggregate material.
Does that answer your question, kinda? In a way?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay.
For two seats, stabilization must be applied.
But once the project's done, you know, it's, to its...
I, I just want to be careful with that language.
Yeah.
Again, this is a unique project in that there's work to get to a gravel floor, but it's going to be maintained in perpetuity. So I don't think there's opposition to a condition. It just needs to be very carefully crafted.
Yeah.
So that there's no misunderstanding 10, 15 years down the road, and the town comes in and attempts to try to get it stabilized when they fully intend to continue the operating operation. So I think that's what we're worried about, is just that it's worded. If there is a condition, if that be the pleasure of the Board, that be worded, you know, very carefully.
Yeah, we can work on language for that. Yep.
Okay, moving on. So we discussed last time the bond for the property, and what we had proposed is to stabilize or put forth a bond to facilitate the slopes. Again, the slopes, the detention basins and the swales, that's about 2.35 acres. We proposed $10,000 per acre for $23,500, and Jeff is in agreement with that, item number two.
Okay. So you're no longer waiving, requesting a waiver for the bond? We'll have a bond, but that's?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
So it's, just to be clear, it's a partial bond.
Yeah.
Because this is not, again, a true, I know I keep saying it, but it's not a true earthwork operation. So I guess technically, we're still requesting a partial waiver because we're limited to 2.35 acres of restoration, if that's clear.
No.
Hold on, Jeremy.
I don't think it's...
Jeremy, Jeremy, Jeremy. Just let us figure it out first, I'll get to the audience. I don't want to have to ask you to leave. So what are your thoughts on that, Mr. Benoit?
I mean, I understand, this is kind of what we talked about, was, was bond to seed the slopes, the swales, the stormwater basin, make sure grass is growing on that, and make sure that that's controlled erosion at that point prior to them starting the operation. I think that's an absolutely reasonable plan.
Okay. Board, any comments or? No? Mr. Preston? I don't know, you like your, the waivers, please?
Not a fan of waivers.
Yeah.
So far, so good.
Okay. Let's just get through these ones.
Yeah, I just got a couple of quick ones to touch on. Item number three on page two of four. So as you'll recall, one of the waivers was to, was regarding the offset to groundwater, as you heard at the last, or the initial hearing tonight. 10 feet is impossible, really, and unheard of. For the previous project on Lot Six, which is essentially the same exact project, we were granted a waiver to allow four-foot offset to groundwater. That's exactly what we've proposed here. And it looks like Jeff has no issues at the basins for four feet, but is suggesting that perhaps we maintain a greater offset, and he, he says six to eight feet. I'm not sure what the basis of that recommendation is, but that is a problem for us because that would result in pretty significant changes to the entire gravel floor in terms of its grade, so that it positively drains. So again, exactly consistent with the last project on Lot Six, we are asking for the four-foot offset to groundwater.
Jeff, any comment on that?
Certainly. The basis of my recommendation was based upon the testing at test pits, TP-9, TP-5 and TP-4 that run north-south just right of the middle of the site. This is a natural valley. It has, it's based upon the soil testing that was done and put on the plans, and it's based upon the six to eight feet, or numbers I recited in comment number three, were based upon the conditions as they exist today. The plans are proposing a two-foot cut along this north-south corridor in the valley, so that would compromise by two feet the existing groundwater offset. That is, that's the portion of the site which, you know, my recommendation to the Board was to consider not granting a waiver of, of reducing the groundwater offset to less than what it is today before earth removal begins.
Follow-up question?
Yes, I'm not, I'm not sure I quite understand. The, the test pits that Mr. Walsh cited, Test Pit Four, Five, and Nine, we are maintaining, he's right, we are going lower than the natural grade, but that's, that's true for the entire site. We would have at Test Pit, Test Pit Number Four, 5.3 feet of an offset. Test Pit Nine, 5.3 feet, and Test Pit Five would be four feet, Test Pit Number Five. I essentially held four feet from Test Pit Number Five and based all the grades on the entire site from that offset at Test Pit Five. So I, if I understood what he's saying, his, his desire would be in that natural valley not to lower the grade, but we're changing the grades throughout the site in providing positive drainage and swales and directing stormwater. So I, with all due respect, we still really are requesting a four-foot offset throughout, or a minimum offset of four feet.
Chair, could I ask a question, just so I can understand?
Yeah.
So, you know, I know, building a house, you got a slab, you know, building inspector wants 18 inches below the water table. I mean, we're talking vertical. But when you're doing your basins, your stormwater management basins, they need to retain water, obviously, you know, you're, you're engineering that. But if you create a plateau, whether it's four feet at that low level there, how do you do your basins if you create that plateau that you guys use, which you just called your gravel layer?
Gravel floor.
Floor, like that. And how do you get your basins two or three feet lower without hitting, you know, if you start going down lower to drain all that, how?
It's a good question. So what we have done in our proposed basin locations is actually dig test pits and determine the seasonal high groundwater there. And because of the topography, how it changes, the groundwater elevation depth obviously changes. So in this case, we were able to hold four feet in the valley, as we described, grade everything to the basins and still maintain four feet of an offset from the bottom of the basin to the season.
So your test pits are indicating a lower water table in those two areas?
Yes, because the grade is much lower. So we always put our basins at the, the lower.
I understand, but you just said that if it's four feet, it's gonna be throughout, like bottom of a lake or something.
Jan, not throughout, but at a minimum, it's four feet across the floor, but it's also four feet from the bottom of the basins.
We're having a little knee, I'm having a little knee-jerk reaction from water issues all around, you know, different projects we have. We were told certain things and other things didn't happen, and of course, storms came and all that other stuff, so that's all. We just want to be careful. Everyone wants to be careful.
Sure.
We want you to be careful for yourselves and us, because we want you to be successful.
Mr. Walsh, did you hear the follow-up comments?
Yes, I did, and thank you for asking. With the basins are proposed, the top, the topography is much lower, existing topography is much lower, hence groundwater is much lower in those areas.
Okay.
Groundwater, if you're in an extremely gravelly site, you don't get a lot of groundwater gradient to make water move because there's not a head loss in coarse soils compared to fine soils. So I wouldn't say water seeps its level in sands and gravels, but that can be the case. On the opposite side of glacial tills with much tighter, tighter soils, you have much more head loss of groundwater flow, and it's generally taken that if you dig in a certain area and you get four foot of groundwater, the groundwater generally stays parallel with the surface of the land. Again, only until you're in tight, tight soil type of sites. So I, I don't disagree with the response from Mr. Dryden. I did want to share with the Board, I gave my recommendation, but I'd like to make clear why. And that is quite simply the future development of property upon which earth removal is occurring. I've had a couple of clients where, where one in particular was a gravel site, and the, the proponent was forever trying to lower the, lower the excavation more than they should. That town did have a different set of regulations, and it was a true gravel site, and there was high groundwater there. And so what was made very clear to me by my municipal client was that they wanted to make sure suitable soil was left on the site so that once earth removal operations start and the site was eventually developed, it could be developed without a major import of soil material. But that's the reason for, for my recommendation.
Do you want to work some changes or discuss it further, for maybe next time?
If I could, just to respond to that, I agree with Jeff, actually, that the maximum amount that you can leave is beneficial for future development. Four feet is the number that is fairly typical because four feet of naturally occurring material is what you need for septic systems. In this case, if you do ever develop the site in the future, if there's import to be, if the soil will be imported, it would be very minimal. That four feet is key, and that's why we identified that four feet, not only for Lot Six, but for this project as well. We could, we could have come in and asked for two feet, but we're, we're maintaining four feet for that reason.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may counter?
Yeah.
Four, four, four feet of natural occurring impervious material is required to demonstrate the soils are suitable for Title V system. Four feet or five feet of groundwater separation is required depending upon the perp rate, and then you need the, you need the soil profile to be raised by the height of the leaching area and the amount of cover over it. So if you've got, say, a foot and a half or two-foot tall leaching trench, that's about another two and a half feet, counting for pipe slope and peystone over the top of the system. So in gravels, you get a five-foot offset, you got two and a half feet for your profile of your trenches, and another foot of cover, you're, you're up around eight and a half feet. So I just want to be careful that we talk apples to apples when we talk about what soil is needed on the site for development, or for that matter, for constructing a full basement that's not embedded down into the groundwater it needs, major dewatering facilities just for the, just for the space if there is a full basement under a structure.
So I would probably just recommend taking care of the comments for that section.
Well, I think if I could, Mr. Chairman, and I don't disagree with anything Jeff just said, but I, I don't want to place too much emphasis on a future development. We're doing what is necessary to facilitate the project today. We are maintaining four feet. If, if material had to be brought back in in the future, it would be unfortunate, but I don't want that to be the tail that wags the dog, if you will.
Yeah.
Again, I don't disagree with anything that was just discussed.
Now, just with the comments, our town engineer is recommending that we don't grant that waiver, so I'd, you're asking for the waiver, he's saying we don't grant that waiver, so I just want to make sure.
Waiver's for 10 feet, right?
Right, the waiver is for 10 feet. We're asking for four, and he's suggesting that we raise the grades. So we'd be raising the grades. So we'd be raising the grades, you know, a couple of feet, which is, doesn't sound significant, but over the area of the project in order for it to positively drain, it is fairly significant.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, this is intended to be permanent. We're not doing this for future development of a building. You know, this is intended to be a gravel floor area that outlives me and my kids, my grandkids. It's intended to be this way permanently.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm not, first of all, I'm not trying to hamstring the applicant. Second of all, I'm not asking for the entire floor to be raised two feet. It's that the valley that runs north and south in the middle of the site, that probably has more so the soil deposit than the hill, the tall hill on the left or west side of the site, and the smaller hill to the right side of the site where they'll be removing earth that'll probably consist of rock. I'm worried about the true soil, which probably runs in that valley that runs north and south. So that's probably, you know, when I say north and south, my concern is basically following that car path that runs north and south on the site for a total width of probably in the order of 150 to 200 feet, far from the entire width of the, of the site.
I understand that, but Jeff, you have to look at all the grades sort of holistically. If I raise the grade two feet in the site, now I completely change the drainage patterns on the site. I may need to add basins. The idea is to get this to drain from the west, cut slope all the way across, partially into the basin to the north, but most along the southern boundary. So by raising the grade just in the middle, it becomes problematic. So that's why I mentioned that really would have to be more site-wide than just locally.
All right, so I think, so I think, I'll let you go, Mr. Graves. Sorry. All right, Mr. Wallace.
All right, all right. No, thank you. I've said and made all the points. I wanted to make sure the board heard tonight about my position. And it is a recommendation to the board, and I certainly realize I have no vote in this. But nonetheless, it's my duty to make sure I share with you my experience and my thoughts on this.
Board, any comments or questions on that one?
Yeah. I'll just remind you that it's no different than lot six. We did the exact same thing in this board, granted a waiver for four feet. Understood.
Two ears.
All right, so how about number four? That one's all said.
Yeah, the only other one would be number 11. Everything else is reconciled. And this is just a minor technical issue. The pipe slope that we have is still too, too steep, the velocity is too steep. We're going to add a manhole, flatten the pipes. That's easy.
Okay.
Very easy to fix.
Okay. All right, so Ford?
That takes care of that.
Ford? Follow-up on that. Well, do you have any questions on what was presented so far? Anyone?
No.
No? Mr. Benoit, anything on what's been presented? All right. If you want to get into the sound?
Sure. Unfortunately, our sound engineer was not able to be here this evening, but again, we did receive a peer review for the sound study, and there'll need to be some back and forth between the two consultants to work out some technical issues. They're basically requesting a more in-depth study, and the reason we did what we did, and again, I'm not the sound engineer, so I'm sort of talking about this high level, but my understanding is the level of detail that the sound study was brought to was conservative in that it showed positive results in complying with noise levels without taking into consideration topography, vegetative cover. So that's why they stopped where they did. The peer review consultant is suggesting that we do a more in-depth level of sound study. Again, we think it's conservative as it is, so there'll need to be some back and forth between the two consultants.
Okay.
Our consultant is on seven.
Yeah. Valery?
Yeah.
Michael?
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Yes.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Have you just named a company for us for the record?
Certainly. So I'm Michael Batarian, I'm with Acoustics Consulting from Centec out of Cambridge, Massachusetts, and I'm speaking to you from my home today, Pittsburgh, Mass.
All right. Any comments on what you've seen and looked into?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair. I would disagree with my peer review, with the premonition that my peer review is asking for a more in-depth study. It's, and that the study is conservative. It's exactly what my point was made in the conclusions, I think, very clearly. The study by Tech Environmental used average metrics in two different, in two different ways. One, the measurements that they made every hour was a metric called LEQ, which is effectively an average for each hour. So the instruments we use take samples maybe every eight, eight times a second, it takes all that data and then it averages it in a decimal way. It's a, it's a certain type of, it's not an arithmetic average, but I think technically we can lean it at that. So for each of the, each of the values in their report in Table 4, at location 2, which is at the existing facility, those are effectively hourly averages. So if there was some kind of construction activity that had a fairly high level for a couple of seconds or a couple of minutes, those kind of sounds would be greatly discounted in each of those hourly metrics. Secondly, the acoustic consultant or proponent here, Tech Environmental, took of all the data that they collected over the three days, they used the average of all that. They didn't even use the maximum of all that, meaning what's the highest level at any time. To me, that's a very distorted evaluation, particularly when the instruments that we have, when you're collecting LEQ value, usually give you all the other statistical metrics. And typically, the one that's used for construction-type activities, I'm not 100% familiar with the activity here, but it seems like it was represented like it was a construction activity, you know, would be this metric called L10, which is the 10th percentile. It's not the maximum sound level, but it's nearly, it's the 10th percentile highest sound level. And I think if the 10th percentile metric was used in Table 4, and then the average of all of those, and then that was used in this assessment and the rest of the math that I really didn't disagree with, and that was shown to be, you know, within the guideline, the state guideline, I think you'd then be saying, okay, this is a fair screening tool, screening study, I think was the term used. So I'm not really asking for more work. If the consultant used instruments like my firm, they would have the data that were saying should be used instead of the other two.
So you say you're not the sound engineer?
Yeah, I'm not. And ideally, we would have that person here to speak to these issues. So as I did mention, I think correctly, that there needs to be a back and forth between the two consultants to work this out.
Okay. That's, makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I think the question, step one, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me. I think the first question is, does the, does the proponent, Tech Environmental, when they collected the data, did they collect the L10 data? That's what I'm suggesting maybe they use. There's a couple of different methods I've suggested. I haven't, you know, really asked, ready to be expanded. I just asked for two things to be done just slightly differently.
I think that's where I may have misunderstood, not being, not understanding all this stuff fully, so.
Yeah, and there's a lot of words and phrases used, and I'll let the sound engineers hash that out.
Exactly.
And get back to us on their comments.
It's also a site walk, it's to be scheduled tomorrow.
Okay. With?
This site, site walk.
I'm going to be walking with our tech.
Okay. Perfect. I know we didn't get too much into the sound. Any questions on the sound?
So just reading, this is Aaron. We use the state guidelines, because we don't, we don't have our own guidelines, but we use the state. And they talk about ambient sound, and they talk about 10 decimal difference over ambient becomes somewhat of a nuisance. It's, I just read that in here. I mean, that's, I mean, if you have, you're in the middle of the woods, someone yells out, you hear it. You know, if you're in the city, yell out, you don't hear it. So what's our baseline? Because we have neighbors, and we have to be responsive to the neighbors. I mean, it's just the tough, you know, when you have industrial zones, commercial zones, presidential, you know, very tough. I live next to a big board factory in David, and there were sounds and smells and all that. Very sensitive to that, so.
I don't have an answer. I just know we have to get the answers, and we have to be responsive to your neighbors, and you have a right to do business, and they have a right to live and have a barbecue without. Did you mention something about, if I may ask, doing, I just changed, crushing off-site and not doing crushing here? And using your site for sales and moving around material?
As part of our business in the past, we've gone on different projects that, you know, that's where the material is.
When you crush it there?
We've crushed it there, we then bring it back, stockpile for further processing. Most material processed twice, or minimum twice. So we do a primary processing, and back to secondary processing.
So there was no scenario by which you would not do some sort of crushing at your site?
We definitely will do.
That's what I'm asking, because I heard that and I wanted to clarify.
No, it's no scenario where.
Because if you weren't doing any crushing there and everything was for sale and moving around like a yard, you know, which is separate from the earth removal, because once you get to your, in your regular business. But if that's the standard, that they're going to have crushing, they're going to have crushing. Thank you. Ford, anything else? All right, so there's some, some back and forth to be done for that. All right, so Mr. Benoit, anything on your end to update us on for this before going to the public?
If you wanted to discuss any of the waivers that were requested as part of the application.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Yeah, let's do that quickly.
I have. So you want to just go through them quickly?
Yeah. Can you actually just guide us to where they are in this package?
They're in the initial package that was submitted. It's dated April 16th, part of the narrative.
Okay. All right, so you'll have to do some reading.
Yeah, that's okay. So Section 6.1, 6.1, excuse me, my face, that's regarding the bond, and we discussed that at length, and I think, I know Graves is of agreement, I think what I heard from the board is there's a consensus that our approach and the amount of the bond was acceptable. So the bond still applies because it's not a 100% restoration, because again, I'll say it a thousand times, that this is not a suitable gravel operation. So number one still applies. I guess we call it a partial waiver at this point. Waiver number two, Section 6.1, 6.3, this is the waiver that Town Council weighed in on regarding five feet within adjacent property that is no longer requested, so number two is out. This is the one that we just discussed with Mr. Graves, item number three, 6.1.66, no excavation within 10 feet. And I would really appreciate if we could get input from the board on this one because it will affect our plans, so it would be nice for us to know. Again, we still are requesting a four-foot offset, which is what the current plans reflect, consistent with lot six. Again, that's waiver number three.
How many are the, how many waivers are there?
There are eight.
Okay, cool.
Waiver number four, 6.1.67, all top and subsoil stripped shall be stockpiled and essentially used in restoring. Again, this is another, I guess I call it a partial waiver because we're going to do a partial restoration for the 2.35 acres that I described. Number five, 6.1.69, the active excavation operation shall be determined by the board, but in no instance shall exceed 10 acres. The overall limit of work is 11 acres, but if you take the basins away in the stormwater management aspect, we are under 10 acres. I requested this waiver, I heard this earlier, due to an abundance of caution. I don't even think it applies, but again, area of disturbance exceeds 10 acres, but the area of excavation minus your stormwater components is less than 10 acres. We'll leave it up to the board to decide whether that applies. I will also say in this case that we asked for this same waiver on lot six, and the site was actually one acre larger, and that waiver was granted on lot six.
I do have questions, Chairman, if I could.
Yeah.
Through you to the applicant. He's saying technically you'll have 11 acres of active excavation less what?
11 acres is literally where the erosion control barrier will be, the limit of work. So that's 11 acres. If you take the stormwater basins out, the stormwater mitigation, you're under 10 acres. So the active area of excavation is under 10 acres.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know you're repeating yourself, I just wanted to.
That's quite all, happy to do that. Item number six, 6.1.610 to 13, this is really all geared toward trucking routes, and all of this was discussed and handled as part of lot six, which is where the access is. So it really doesn't apply, but since it's a requirement, we asked for the waiver.
Those waivers were applied to get the decision, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. That's the front line.
Let's see, number seven, 6.1.71, restoration shall be carried on simultaneously with, so that when any active excavation, I don't think that's worded correctly, but at least two-thirds of the active excavation operation shall, so basically what they're saying is you need to restore as you go, and again, for the, over a thousand times, that's not what we have here. So it's required, so we technically requested the waiver. The last one, waiver number eight, Section 6.1.74, again, redundant, retain subsoil and topsoil, shall be spread over the area of a minimum of four inches. I guess this would be another partial restoration, because the four inches of lowland seed would be applied to slopes, swales, basins. The gravel floor will remain as gravel. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so Mr. Benoit, if we can go through them.
I don't have any issues with the restoration waivers at all.
He's got to speak up a little bit more, Matt.
Right, sorry. I don't have any issues with the restoration ones, since those are, this is tended to be a permanent operation, but the partials make sense because they are restoring the slopes, the basins, and those things. So I understand that. What was that, 6.1.67, topsoil stripped, that's for, that's for the restoration area, so that one, that one makes sense. The only one, as Mr. Dryden pointed out, is number six, and for the peer review consultant, what, what depth are we looking for with the, with the annual high water tip? That's a pretty fair question, because if this Ford is moving in one way or the other, the applicant would like to know so they can revise their plan.
Ford, any?
Five.
It's tough to go against what the peer review engineer is recommending, but also hearing both sides of it.
I guess if I could just, if I'm not overstepping my boundaries, what seems to puzzle me is he's okay with closer to, as little as four feet everywhere except for one isolated area on the site. It just, it doesn't quite make sense to me. I would suggest that we pick a standard and hold it.
Through the chair, and the chair put it this way, that said, we have a consultant that, and you guys know what you're doing, he knows what we're doing, he's doing, and he says six to eight, and you guys say four. Because there's some work, some accord in the middle that we feel that we're listening to both parties, but.
So I'm almost saying we hold off on this one, and if, in the meantime, you want to try to discuss with him to come up with some.
Well, I think you heard his position.
Yeah.
He's focused on future development, which is, I don't think we should be focused on here. I understand exactly why he's bringing these points up, but that's not, this is, this is an operation that, as Tom says... is an operation that, as Tom says, is going to be in perpetuity.
Is that, I mean, if it needs to be restored to six feet, because they're going to do buildings or something, then does that mean you're bringing it to, like, later?
Yeah, I mean, that has happened.
I agree, I would love you to stay there.
In the event that, in the unlikely event, I'll call it, that there's a development here and there needs to be material brought in, well, somebody's going to have to, the developer's going to have to pay to bring in material, but again, I hate to see that be the tail that wags the dog, because that's not the intent here.
No, but I mean, it could be five years from now, it could be 10 years from now, and it could be 20 years from now, it's going to be written something. It has to be, you know, you know, we have certain responsibilities up here, and we're getting, we're getting a little loose, and it isn't you, we're just getting feedback that we're, we need to be a little dot the i's, cross the t's, and I want to make sure that we're right and being heard, right and respected, right, and that's why we have consultants, and that's why we have businesses.
Sure, absolutely, and I respect the consultant, they're very good consultants, I've worked with them many times. I just want to, again, reiterate that. If somebody comes to develop this and they need to put septic systems on the site, they would have to comply with Title V and local Board of Health regulations, and if that entailed bringing in some soil, that's the cost to be borne by the developer. It's really that simple.
Right, but not after the fact, and then they come in, they say, geez, you know, we didn't know we had to do this, because the people selling the land and tell us, and somewhere it's got to be somewhere.
Well, if you're doing your due diligence as a developer-
You know what I mean?
But there would be something, they would say, we were granted the offset to four feet, anyone that researched this decision would see four feet, and that would be part of the standard titles, or whatever the number is.
Well, maybe I'll open up the public comment, and if anyone addresses that, we can take any input on that, so. So it is a public hearing, so.
I do have one last question, if I could, I'll be brief. I have a question for you, on section 6.1.7.1, restoration.
Which number is that, I'm sorry?
6.1.7.
Yeah, which number?
Number one. Active excavation area.
It's the first waiver?
Yeah, number one. The intent, you understand the intent of that, correct, that if you're doing earth removal, they don't want any more than one-third, or about three acres, less than that acres, they don't want them any more than that open, because it would be subject to dust control, what have you. So you're talking about having as much as 10 acres as an active area, without any restoration, right?
No, no, no. So 2.35 of the 10 would be restored. That's the slopes, the basin, and the swales. The gravel floor is the portion that would not be restored, because it's part of the permanent operation.
And how large is the gravel floor? How much area is that?
That's roughly 11 minus 2.35, roughly.
What?
Minus your basis.
What fraction of that, what fraction of that would be to the whole site? Like, sort of third, but what would it be?
It's less than that. So, but again-
Did you say three quarters? Excuse me, sorry.
Again, it doesn't really-
Let me cut to the chase here. The reason it's in there, as you probably know, is so that when you have certain conditions, I don't know if you remember last summer, hot days, low humidity, it was like a dust bowl out there. An analogy, it was like Oklahoma in the 30s. So what do you do with that open area? Whatever that open area is, we know working, is there anything you do to mitigate and have some level of dust control if the conditions created? Because you have neighbors next door, I mean, it was so bad from all the pits last summer that you couldn't drive down the road with your windows open. So what will you do for us in terms of those areas?
Through the chair, we have a water tanker on site, it's permanently on site, when it's empty, we fill it, bring it back, and we're currently, we have a water truck, we had one last year, it's not as roadworthy as it was, so we're currently putting one together that will be on site permanently. We were there, lot six, the front lot, you know, is the gravel floor, we were there last year, we had the same setup.
I imagine it would be, if I might, to your benefit, to have less dust also.
Without question, it helps everything.
Yeah, so that would be appreciated, and we'll be looking for that to help us out.
We're working on it.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so, audience, anyone else? Jeremy?
Yes.
If you, I know you have a loud voice, but the mics might not pick it up. If you'd just come a little closer to the table, please.
All right. I just want to-
Just name it, I know, I know who you are, but, yep.
63 Monroe Street.
Thank you.
We've got kind of some kind of division here. One side of the board is calling this an earth removal permit, and the other side is saying we're not removing gravel. So I don't know where we stand on that. And my next question is on lot six, he's saying that he has 150 feet of frontage, and I believe that's not the required, I don't know how he gets from a circle, legacy circle, how he has 150 feet of actual frontage. Now, the other thing that I'd like to really mention is the blasting, because I know on this particular thing, he says it's going to be blasting. Now, the first blast that Mr. McIntyre, on May 8th, said that he's not hiring, I guess apparently the contractor, was A1 blasting, and he said, he's not hiring again because they use too much blast material, or diamond, DND. Well, I've been waiting since I complained on the 12th to the fire department, filed my paperwork with the fire chief, because the blasting happened on the 7th of March at 12 o'clock. They told me to fill out page one of a two-page document. A1 took about a month and a half to get back to me, they sent a month later an adjuster down, they won't share to me what's on page two, they haven't given me anything when it comes to calcs. No seismic calcs, no geotechnical review, nobody came to my house, my house has been damaged, and everybody just wants to walk away. Where's this exit from this subdivision? He's investing all this money into this precast concrete culvert and bridge down there, all right? And obviously, you can see all the piles of sand and dirt and rocks and everything, which ain't a sand pit or a gravel removal according to this gentleman here. But where's this going to come out? And they're saying that they can go as far as they want to go, because there's not going to be a building. Well, of course, there can't be a building, because he doesn't have the frontage. I just don't see the logic in what's going on here, or what's the end result? It would just be, if we're all going to live as neighbors, can you just share some of your, what's the final plan here? If I'm going to live through all this, you know, I'm sitting on 100 acres of land, and a trust with my, you know, my family, and we got one of the biggest historical bonds in town, right there on Monroe Street, and I don't care what you say, or what anybody says here about sound. If you come to my house, because I can guarantee you, these three days of sound testing was not done during blasting. Do it during blasting, and then you're all going to have a different perspective for what's going on. And he obviously did his three days of testing when there was nothing going on, all he was doing was probably loading triaxles, and not doing any actual rock crushing or blasting. I would think that that would be a lot more beneficial, but I just, I think the board should reconsider this. Thank you.
Fair questions, I'm not going to get into the complaints, though, that you have with the blasting at the other site. Just go through the community development department, then the fire department complaint. I just want to focus on what's going on with this site. We hear, we hear the comments, I just don't want them to answer about adjusters and stuff like that.
I'm sorry, sir, I thought this was an extension to his existing lot six off of Legacy Place. This was going to be, so the same basic rules would be implied to this next extension off of Legacy Place.
No, I meant, I don't want to get into, if you have an issue with A1 blasting and damage to your property, I'm, we're not going to discuss that here.
I understand.
So, that's my, that was my comment for that.
My comment is that transparency, when it comes to the actual guy that hired the blaster, is not forthcoming.
All right, so there's some questions there, some fair questions, if you have any responses.
Sure.
I can help out.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't remember everything, but I have not fired A1, A1 is still our blaster. I didn't know, I did not know that you had an issue, they didn't tell me. I believe the seismic information, they record every time they blast, the fire department has a copy of that every time that a blast happens, and it's within a day. It's usually the same day, but certainly by the next day, the fire department has that We have not blasted for four months, maybe, something like that? I don't know the exact date, but certainly we were not blasting during the sound study. We were crushing with both crushing plants and screening, so we were doing what our operation is. The blasting is only until the ground is, or the site is leveled, and then the blasting goes away. We're not, it's not a quarry, and it's certainly just to level the land.
I haven't read fully in-depth into the sound study, so just make sure all that's noted.
The sound study mentions that.
Okay.
And of course, it's been peer reviewed by your-
Yeah, and the peer review is here in the comments.
Right. I don't recall any other-
Lot line, or?
The frontage.
Frontage.
So this is the definitive subdivision that's recorded as a registered deeds, and I'll even give you the, it's Plan Book 962, Plan 9, and on sheet L1, 3 of 10, lot six, it shows 150 feet of frontage, slightly more than 150 feet, there's also a zoning tape along the plan, the minimum required frontage in the industrial zone is 150. The only other comment I wrote down here was, maybe there's some confusion as to how far the project goes in terms of its work limits, it's clearly defined on the plans, there's erosion control barriers, we're not proposing anything more than what's shown on the plans that are before you.
So, ask about maybe an end game, is there an end game plan, you can answer that?
It's just a heavily gravel floor, base floor, like we've been talking about, processing and wholesaling, and there, that's, that is the end game, as far as I'm concerned, yeah. There is no, the lot does not touch front, there's zero frontage or even touching on Monroe Street. Our only access in the town of Douglas is through Legacy Circle.
I think one of the questions, too, was, an exit? Is there another exit?
There is not one proposed, yep. All the activity on the project before you, come through Legacy Circle.
Did they, I know you had a few questions, Jeremy, did we get them all, or?
Can I just flip back through these?
Yeah.
The one that showed the property lines? This one that goes through to Monroe Street? How does he explain that?
Does he?
I believe that somebody is, the audience is-
Okay, so your question, just explain the cutout there?
Again, there's no work proposed there, the work limit is way over here, this, there's a big wetland in here, we could never utilize that for access, there's no intent, there's nothing proposed on here that proposes any work within this appendage or access to Monroe Street, period, and I don't know what else to say.
It was just a part of the land, and I don't even think it touches Monroe Street.
It may not even be touched, but it doesn't matter, because it's not, we're not proposing to use it. And it would far exceed allowable wetland impact to have an access to that appendage of the property.
And that plan there, that's just highlighting the entire property, 5 McIntyre, not-
Thank you for clarifying, that was kind of deceiving.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the audience with questions or comments? Again, if you can just come closer to the table so the mics can hear you, and name an address, please.
So, Robert Mills Ark, I live in a 30 Walla Grove Street, Oxbridge, actually, but I own some very small in Douglas. I guess my questions are about the sound study as well, is that going to be published for public access?
It's public access.
So then who would I request that from? From me?
From Maro.
Because, I mean, like I said, I live in Oxbridge, but it backs up basically to it. I mean, it has dramatically impacted, I mean, I can hear the crushers going pretty much all day long, so that's why I was interested in understanding how they did their calculations on the sound study, because it sounds like if you are using your averages, it does offset kind of the maximums, the peaks, and stuff like that. So that was my question. And then also, I guess my other question was about the long term. I know you say you're planning on this for in perpetuity, but, I mean, that's not, it's not realistic, unfortunately. So how long do you anticipate, or are you really able to utilize it as a gravel, or I guess, pit or whatever you call it, I guess? I mean, you can't continue going down, 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 I guess, I'm not in the business, so I don't understand, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, so, to answer that question, we don't plan on going any further down or lower than what the proposed plan shows. We plan on using the land to process material that is not natural to that site, not native to that site.
Apologies, I didn't mean to cut you off. So you're going to bring in other material and process it secondarily?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, your first question, the community development department office, town hall hours, you can go in, or online, Mr. Benoit's contact information's there, if they're getting copies of those.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Yes, is it appropriate to just make two notes relative to the purple comments?
Sure.
So I've got these notes, again, my peer review, very quickly, I would say that the comment regarding explosives, I have a paper copy of my report, of the report, the Tech Environmental Report. I do not recall that it said anything one way or the other about explosives occurring or not occurring. I think the proper check, I can do that with a search of the document, but my look at this quickly does not say that it was occurring or not. So that's a point to be made, but the point that your community member made is exactly it, is if there were an explosive event during three days, it would likely be highly discounted by the metric that was used. Ultimately, I might not say it's, you know, it's a very infrequent occurrence, so I don't know how we deal with that as a sound issue, but certainly, it would very unlikely have even registered in any of the metrics if it was done. So I think that's something for the Tech Environmental to point out. Also, if there are bidders in other municipalities, the sound study, and I didn't know this myself, wasn't right in front of me, but, you know, the sound study needs to look at what their code may be. Now, it may end up in the same place, but if there was a different code in Oxbridge, I think this project, not offering legal advice, but someone that does a lot of sound studies, multiple municipalities do need to be addressed, I would get that verified by legal counsel. So Oxbridge, if they have a sound code, that needs to be looked at, in my opinion. Thank you.
Pass that along.
I have a question for the audience member from Oxbridge, if I could.
Yeah.
Oxbridge, resident, how far would you say you are from the site, if you estimate?
Obviously, I'm not exactly sure, I live-
Honestly, I'm not exactly sure, I live, I mean, it's...
Sure we can get a pretty good estimate?
Yeah, she knows how far, she's my neighbor, so, I mean...
710, about 700 feet.
Okay.
My, our house is 800.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I can walk through the woods, basically, through, past the fire, or that pipeline easement, I can walk through to the pit, pretty much.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Manry, 36 Monroe.
Yes.
Hello again.
Hello.
I would like some clarification from the first public meeting that we had, in which the engineer said that the work area to the lot line was 600 feet, but the plan that I have here, I know it addresses to you.
Yeah.
Right, but on here, in the area, to the work area, and the work area to the house, or to the pipeline, which is a lot line, says it's 400 feet. And you said, you had told me it was 600 feet. So, why am I in the weeds on this? Because sound attenuation has a huge impact on that, 200 feet. And the Mass D E P says that you have to measure from the property line. So, your property line is 400 feet, not 600 feet.
Are you able to clarify that?
Yeah, I remember the moment clearly, I didn't have the benefit of that plan, I used my pen and the scale bar, and I just, I qualified it, I said, "I'm guessing," so I don't think it's off that much, but it could easily be off, but the distances on that map that has been submitted are all accurate. So I do remember that moment very clearly. I didn't mean to deceive anybody, it was just a guess.
Is, so what, does that kind of clarify what you're looking for, or?
No, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that it's 400 feet for the sound attenuation stud, not 600.
It's all based on the area, so it is what it is, I guess you would say, they're working with scaled maps on the sound study.
Okay.
Okay. I also would like to make comment about, get, I apologize, this has been a rude, sinister commentary, about the water and the noise and the dust, and that's certainly secondary to the noise being a nuisance, or the sound, you know, the noise being pollution, and that is that the operation that you have, is basically, that McIntyre has, basically produces dust, and that's what it does. So, he has a truck outside, one truck on 11 acres of all kinds of gravel crushing going on, one water truck, I mean, it's probably, I'm sorry, it's not even going to take care of your own operation, never mind the dust bowl that Mr. Preston was talking about. So, the dust is, it is a big issue, not as big an issue as the sound, because as Mr. Millsaric said, we can hear that from where you are now, and you're going to be twice as close as you are. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, so we'll definitely work on the sound study and get more input from that perspective.
Sorry, can I ask one other question, I guess?
Just one more, just one second, and any other further documentation, or something you can do for dust control that we can come up with, plans, and obviously, that's going to be a concern, so.
Yeah.
Is, I guess you gotta, if you can explain how much your truck can handle, and what your truck can normally do.
So, the tank is, I think it's an 8,000 gallon tank, and the truck that we're working on is 2,900 gallons.
And you rip through the site in one run, or what's your typical operation?
Passes around it, it's the way of the site, where there's a lot of piles on the site. I mean, I couldn't tell you how many acres are taken up by piles right now, but substantial, so there's just roadways, so it's pretty easy to travel the roads. We're not watering 11 acres or 10 acres.
Yeah.
Substantial amount of it is like rock.
Yeah, I understand what you're doing. Will that one truck be able to handle this site and that site, or?
Well, there'll be two certainly by then.
Okay.
This one's on, online, but, you know, one, if I had a full-time person working with one truck, then by all means, one truck would handle both sites.
Just want to make sure our questions answered. Follow-up?
Yeah, apologies, so I guess my other question to the sound study was, do you anticipate increasing the volume of the work? Are you adding more crushers, or adding more noise generating material, or equipment eventually, or with this addition, or has the, are you, were you working at maximum capacity during the sound study?
So, we were not blasting.
No, that's totally side, blasting is blasting, it's going to happen.
We were, we were crushing with both of our crushing plants, we own two, we're crushing with both. We don't plan on adding a third, we may update, but it would just replace one, or a different one. And we were screening with two screening plants, one on Lot 6, one on the adjacent parcel that we're renting temporarily until we can bring everything into Lot 6. But, it was certainly caught as part of the sound study, as it was in direct line of the monitor.
Anyone else in the audience?
Uh, yeah, I just have a couple of questions on the study.
Name and address.
Richard Neder, 21 McQuillan Street. The first is, so the study, was it, so the current study we're talking about, was it kind of a direct data gathering study on the current operation? Was it a kind of simulation of the new site, what the sound levels would be there, was it both? I mean, that's my first question, and my second question is, there's been some discussion about the crushers operating, I'm curious if the rock hammer was also being used at the times these were taken, because that seems to be, you know, the crusher is, has a level of volume, but it's more consistent, whereas the, you know, the hammer on the excavator is more of a, I don't really know.
Sharp noise?
Yeah, it's well over ambient when you hear that, so that's my two questions.
Okay, um, to answer the first one, there were two locations that they monitored. One was on, both on the gas line, one was as you enter our pit area from Lot 6, on the opposite side of the retention basin. So that was actually location number two, and location number one was down the gas line, pretty much adjacent to the proposed work area, almost directly between that work area and the cul-de-sac of Walla Grove. So, it was, it was on that side of the site. We didn't actually, I guess the predominant noise that we heard while we were there was sounds from the highway, chickens, there must be chickens nearby, birds, planes flying over. I didn't hear, I mean, you could listen hard and hear that stuff, but it wasn't what I noticed. The other site, obviously, the one that was, as you enter our site, you could hear, our, our would have been better, but there was, obviously, distance was a factor in that, and obstructions were a factor.
And rock hammer?
That's a great question, I'm not sure, I don't think it was, but I couldn't be certain.
Um, so just, so that's kind of, I don't want to say retrospective, but it's kind of the current operation. So, in respect to the discussion here, is there, is there like a sound study being done on what it might look like at that site?
I believe the location number one was to see where our current operation, how it affects you there, but really, how we mitigate any sound, or any issues that we're having from sound on the new site. And then, location two, which is the one closer to where we currently are, would have been an example of what kind of noise we're producing at that moment, without having the topography of the new site work area, you know, only using the topography of what's there. So, they had to blend, I believe they have to blend the sounds that they gathered to the topography, and I'm not a sound engineer by any means, but I believe that was the case. So, I think it was trying a dual purpose, figure where we're at, and figure out what we're going to do.
And is there, sorry, another follow-up. So, the sound engineer that you guys hired, is that, is he going to be coming before the board, assuming at a meeting where there could be some more detail?
Yeah.
Questions if we have them?
I guess my foresight wasn't great, I asked, we're not enough time for them to plan on attending either via Zoom or being here, but we're not going to get a decision tonight.
Sure.
By all means, we're going to make sure that...
Have, try to have them here for next time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you know, certainly, that was a fault of mine.
Thank you.
All right, just one sec, anyone else in the audience? Just want to make sure everyone else had an opportunity, Mr. Flansburgh.
Jeremy Flansburgh, 63 Monroe Street. I'd just like to, with that comment, are you suggesting that my six chickens are making more noises than your rock crushing operation with a ramp hole?
Uh, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that's the noise that I...
I'm just saying, my six chickens, are you trying to say...
Jeremy, Jeremy, all right, your question, it was, we got your question, and...
No, I'm kind of offended by that.
He's just making a point of what you're...
I pay my taxes, and this guy's accusing my chickens of making more noise than a rock crushing operation.
So we'll look more into the sound study, and we'll have the sound acoustic engineer answer some more questions and follow up with that. Mr. Benoit? All right, probably hold off on the waivers until, they're just getting late. We have one more, at least one more item to handle, so. I think there'd just be more discussion to have on some of the waivers, so I think we'll just handle that at the next meeting, since we don't, we're not going to vote tonight, so. So we'll continue this hearing. Two, entertain a motion to continue this hearing to Wednesday, August 14th, 7:30 PM. Okay, motion made by Mr. DeRose, seconded by Mr. Preston. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, let's get me into some...
No clock. Behave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
What about that two-hour thing? Do we need to, or is that kind of? Okay. All right.
It's a wild ride.
All right, Public Hearing, Davis Street Realty Trust, application for earth removal permit, ER-240617 industrial building, possible votes, 140 Davis Street. I'll entertain a motion to skip the reading of the hearing notice. And a second, okay, so motion made by Mitch Fleishman, seconded by Mr. Gennadiq, to not read the hearing notice, and it's posted, so the public hearing is now open. Mr. O'Leary?
Good evening, my name is Tim O'Leary, I'm an owner and the vice president of O'Leary Welding at 124 Davis Street in Douglas. Here this evening, well past my bedtime, to speak with you about earth removal permit at 140 Davis Street. So I just want to kind of do an overview of the site, and then kind of get into our request with this. So, this property consists of 11.3 acres, located on the north side of Davis Street in Douglas, lot is frontage of 1,316 feet along Davis Street, and this land abuts our other existing property at 124 Davis Street. To our chagrin, this project requires an earth removal special permit, because more than 300 cubic yards of soil materials will be removed from the site within a one-year period. Other existing conditions, we have the 50-foot wide Tennessee gas pipeline easement that runs through this property, and a wetland area that runs along the frontage, leaving the developable, developable area, excuse my tongue tie here, between the wetlands and the gas easement. So basically, we're boxed in to the north and to the east by the Tennessee gas line, to the south by Davis Street, and to the west by our existing property, 124 Davis Street. That's the area that we're working on from the approved site plan from you folks.
So I'm going to just call you off there, because you just mentioned it, so if Mr. Benoit can assist as well. So we already viewed this site plan, we viewed, we approved the site plan. So this isn't like a new project that we're hearing, but it's a new hearing for the earth removal per part of this project, for them to build their parking lot area as part of the site plan. Any follow-up on that, or, I know it's been peer reviewed, it's been engineered?
Yes, our peer review consultant weighed in on this application, and he issued an email and said that during his site plan review, while reviewing, he felt the earth removal permitting should apply to this project, he also looked at the engineering and technical compliance aspects of earth removal, had no issues at that time, and the plans are still under for your four, the documents he last reviewed, still gets, doesn't need to review it again.
Okay. That's why you have to explain too much, you didn't have to, so.
Sure, absolutely.
So, I guess if you can just get into what you're looking for the board to consider?
Yeah, absolutely, and please feel free to fast forward me, you'll get me to bed sooner. So what we're looking for is some waivers on the, on the bylaw itself. I won't read the bylaw for you, but the first waiver that we're looking for is pursuant to Section 6.1.6.1, and that is the bond required. And our rationale to this waiver request is that the performance, we shouldn't have a requirement of a performance bond due to the nature of this project that will result in bringing the grade down to a level sufficient to set the new building. Unlike traditional earth removal operations, this project, as shown on the site plan, which has been approved, is not going to create deep holes, steep slopes, or embankments, nor is it likely that the project will render the site worthless. This request is related to waivers 4, 5, and 6, which I'll go to following, and relating to site restoration requirements. In summary, we have an approved site plan from you folks, thank you. We're 13 months into this process, and we haven't quit yet, we don't plan to, we need to get a building up ultimately, so that's...
And at the same time, the building occupies the permit, if this isn't...
Correct.
Done to the right standards, you have, you can't get into your building.
Correct. The next waiver request is pursuant to Section 6.1.6.2, and that is inspection of the operation. Again, we have a approved site plan and an order of conditions, these permits already capture the inspectional component of this, so we're asking that be waived. Request number three, pursuant to 6.1.6.4, excavation within 100 feet of a wetland. We're requesting this waiver, because this project has already been granted site approval relative to a new building, and on the order of conditions to work within 100 feet of the wetland. The next waiver, number four, is pursuant to 6.1.6.5, no area shall be excavated so as to cause accumulation of freestanding water unless the board shall permit the creation of a pond. And the reason we're requesting this is because this project has been designed to have the open pond for stormwater treatment, and this is also depicted on that approved site plan. Request number five, no excavation shall be made at less than 10 feet above the annual high water table as established from test pits, we've heard about this all night, ad nauseam. high water table as established from test pits, we've heard about this all night, ad nauseam. We're requesting a waiver for this, that we may be within five feet of the estimated seasonal high groundwater as determined by testing from test pit one, which is shown on the site plan, which is within the proposed building. No groundwater was found within test point one, test pit one, to a depth of eight feet below the finished grade, which is an elevation of 478.6. The building elevation is going to be 484, and that will, that must be met for safe and adequate access around the site. The difference between the bottom of that test pit where no groundwater is found and the finished floor of the new building is 5.4 feet. Moving into the next here, which is pursuant to 6.1.6.7, all top soil, top and subsoil stripped from the operation areas shall be stockpiled, seeded with an erosion control seed mixture and used in restoring the area. Requesting a waiver to this condition as the majority of the top and subsoil will be exported from the site to allow for the building and for the parking lot and driveway. The next waiver request is pursuant to 6.1.6.8, which states any shelters or buildings on the premises for use by personnel or storage of equipment shall be screened from public view and shall be removed from the premises within 60 days. Rational for this is that we're requesting a waiver due to the relatively short duration of the earth removal activities and that the project includes construction of a new building, a permanent structure. The next request is pursuant to 6.1.6.9, excavation operation shall be determined by the board, but in no instance shall it exceed the total of 10 acres at any one time. Natural vegetation shall be left and maintained on undisturbed land for screening and noise reduction purposes. We're requesting a waiver here due to the permanent construction of a new building and with its related landscaping requirements. The planning board and conservation board have issued conditions on the types of finished vegetation that, which shall be placed around basins as well as specifications on new trees to be planted. The next request is pursuant to 6.1.6.11, all access roads leading to public ways shall be treated with suitable material to reduce dust and mud for a distance of 200 feet back from the public way. Requesting a waiver for this due to the proximity of the earth removal area. The entire activity of this earth removal area is within 200 feet of the public way, which is Davis Street, and therefore cannot meet this requirement. The site will be stabilized with asphalt retaining walls and grasses per the site plan, the approved site plan. The next request is pursuant to 6.1.6.12, all access roads shall be constructed at an angle to the public way or with a curve so to help screen the operation from public view. Requesting a waiver from this section due to the proximity of the earth removal area, again, same as the prior request, all activities within 200 feet of the public way per the approved site plan. The next waiver is pursuant to 6.1.6.14, the boundaries of the area of operation must be clearly marked by the app and maintained at all time. Reason we're requesting a waiver here is due to the approved limit of work already permitted by the planning board and the conservation commission. The existing gas easement and the erosion controls will already act as constant limits in this case. And the final request for waiver is pursuant to 6.1.7.1, which states that restoration shall be carried on simultaneously with excavation so that when any active excavation is operation, is in the operational area as determined in section 6.1.6, paragraph nine has been excavated and at least two-thirds of the active excavation operation shall be restored before work commences on the next contiguous active excavation operation. Final restoration work shall be completed within 120 days after excavation. And the reason we're requesting a waiver here is to eliminate the need to restore the site as required by 6.1.7.1 because we're intending to use the site with the permanent building as approved in the site plan. So the final restoration work will be the approved site plan.
Shall I?
No, I think we'll discuss that stuff now. So I understand that a lot of these waivers and requirements are part of your typical gravel operation, which this isn't, you're building a building and just so happen, come to find out you need, our limits are pretty low on what you need a gravel permit for, so.
On that point, I'd love to make a point if I could, and I would direct it through you to Matt. Has this project been assessed? And I think this is the reason you're having this string of waivers, is that I don't think it's being properly applied. This project sounds to me like it should be exempt from the earth removal bylaw. And beyond, beyond 300 cubic yards, following that criteria, any special permit shall not be required for the following types, buildings related activities as follows, excavation below finished grade that is directly and customary and incidental to the construction of all buildings, which all permits required for construction have been issued, including but not limited to excavation for foundation, septic systems, all of this is covered under site plan review. Second, excavation below finished grading that is directly and customarily and incidental to the installation of walks, driveways, swimming pools, or other similar infrastructure or accessory to building construction. So I think, I would just want to argue that I think this bylaw is being misapplied, and that's why you're getting this unfortunate string of waivers, which I don't like, but I just don't think it applies to earth removal, and that's why you have all these.
Yeah, and I think during the special permit process, we kind of pointed that out in the engineering, peer review, and town council, you know, it's, they kind of agreed that they have to go through it, but ultimately you had to make the decision.
Yeah.
Below finished grade is the key phrase here, because all the excavation is above finished grade. That's the key phrase that our peer review consultant hammered on.
They're saying it's above finished grade?
Right.
So if it's above finished grade, even less material, correct?
There's a ton of, ton of material above finished grade over here.
But I would think site plan review would cover all those, where those materials go, what the finished product has to look like, restoration, plantings.
Unfortunately, no.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I just for the record, I want to politely disagree, I think this bylaw is being inappropriately applied. And that's why you have this confusion with some of these projects. We're trying to coincide site plan review with earth removal, but I think we're being too parochial.
If I may, this is acutely 360 or 180 of what we've been talking about in the priors. I mean, this is going to be, you know, kind of a subtilous build-out, you know, paving, curving, landscaping, buildings, you know, retaining walls and such like that. I mean, I don't know that at all, so I think.
It was a tough one. I felt for the outcome, having to go through the process, that we didn't want to go through, I don't think the board really wanted to go through it, but with the peer review and town council's opinion, we had our hands tied with.
We did.
What the language was with our bylaw, so. So we're here, they're here requesting this, so. Mr. Benoit, any comments on the waivers?
I don't have any issues with the waivers. The building commissioner raised a question to me, which I shared with Mr. Larry this afternoon, just gave you this information. He was asking about bonding for the steep slope wall, and that's the steep slope in the back that has the walls, right? Constructional walls and the seating, make sure that's stabilized at some point. Now I understand that part of this construction is to stabilize that so that we're not in the parking lot, right? I mean, you have to do it, right? It's got to be done one way or the other, but no, it's just his comment, he's just curious about bonding possibly just that slope of the floor.
To the chair, does bonding get released once it's in place?
Once it's in place.
So it's short-term?
Well, so to that point, though, we're not, we're not creating an unsafe slope at any point. I mean, the way the slope would be constructed, I got this information from Matt very shortly before those meetings, didn't have a lot of time to do any research. I did make a couple of calls to people who have good answers for how this slope would be constructed, and it would be stabilized as it's built. In other words, it's built from the top down. As they excavate the land down, you're building and stabilizing the slope. So there's never any unstable slope that needs to be born.
And you wouldn't get an occupancy in all until everything is stabilized.
We just want the.
So what's the point?
Yeah.
And it's terraced that way.
Right, exactly. So it's built from the top down as it goes, it's never going to be an unstable slope.
Any other questions in the board? Questions or comments?
How do we move forward?
Oh, first I got to ask the public, it is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any questions, comments, concerns with the project for 140 Davis Street in regards to the earth removal permit? Anyone online have any comments or questions or concerns? Seeing as none, to answer your question, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Submove.
Second. Okay. And it's all, it's going to be all the same conditions basically from the site plan.
Right. Carry those forward, but we have to grant.
So motion was made by Mr. Socrat?
No, and I seconded it.
Okay, Mr. DeRose, seconded, no.
Mr. Preston.
Mr. Preston made the motion, then seconded by Mr. Socrat. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, and the public hearing is closed, so we will vote on the waivers.
Anyone have any opposition to any particular waiver?
No, I mean, if I may, the only one that's a sticky wicket is the five foot on the water table, but this is different, this is a building, this is a situation, it's entirely 180 from the others. I would be in favor of putting a blanket waiver, waivers on all of this before us because of the way myself and others may perceive this as being a build-out of a building and not a, you know, an open pit or anything like that.
Right. I agree.
That's why I ask, because you can take a motion to grant.
Can we make a motion?
Yeah.
To that?
All requested waivers at this point. All, all the requested waivers, not only.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve, if I may, all these requested motions that are before, the nine of them before us, simply that in regards to the build-out of Davis Street.
That's a motion?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Socrat, seconded by Mr. DeRose. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Yeah, all right. And with the waivers all set, we'll be looking to entertain a motion to endorse the application for earth removal permit, ER-240617 industrial building for 140 Davis Street, to approve the application.
Submove.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Preston, seconded by Mr. Socrat. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstains? Okay, unanimous, all set. So we'll, Mr. Benoit, we'll sign stuff and be in contact with you and get what you need to.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Ready for your review.
Thank you all.
Thank you, O'Learys.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
On my diaphragm there. Did council and peer review, our engineers, peer review now, they used to be just engineers, did they suggest this because we recommended it?
No.
Or did it come from them?
It's recommended because it's above finished grade, the earth removal that was coming out, the way the bylaw reads.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Meneric, quick comment on that?
Hey, a quick response to Mr. Preston, council, the key word is above.
Yeah.
We exceeded 300 cubic yards and we're above grade.
Right.
Irregardless of a building.
Yeah.
A building only involves below grade. So either we change the earth removal permit requirements, like Oxford's bridge has got 30,000 yards, we have 300. There's a question now, when we have these trenches for these water mains, we might exceed 300 yards and come to you for an earth removal permit to put in water pipe.
Sounds like a job for Master Plank. Within the roadway.
So that's how, that's how ridiculous this could become.
So I don't think it would ever get that far, but it, some word and research would probably be.
The key word was below, above grade in our, in our bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Meneric. All right. What are you guys here for?
We're just watching.
Okay.
Without entertaining.
All right. So ongoing development, any updates, Mr. Benoit?
Yes, I have a few signature pages for special. We'll have that drafted in one minute.
Okay.
Yes, I do have some updates. There is an item in your packet for the cubes at Gilboa. There is, oh, geez, can't find it. There was some work done, oh, sorry, there's a berm and, and trees proposed. I can't even.
We're talking the cubes of Gilboa, okay?
And there's, there was three sketches provided by the engineer for the berm and the trees to plant, and it was signed off by Mr. McIntyre, who's who's who that he signed off on it, so they're okay to proceed with that stuff.
So they need our vote to move forward with this?
Yes.
This board, everyone, see what we're looking at? It's in the packet, three-page landscaping plan.
Here it is.
Oh, yeah, he signed it.
Yep.
That's, Mr. Meneric introduced us to us at a previous meeting, and now that he's signed off on it, the board just needs to vote to consider these minor modifications to the approved plan.
Yeah, that's fine.
Anyone care to make the motion to?
Can I?
Oh.
Sorry. Can I chime in on this?
Sure, come on up.
Richard Netter, 21th Road Street.
Yes, Richard.
Sorry to be a little bit of a pebbly one issue on this. So I've been communicating with, kind of through Mr. Meneric the past couple of months with the civil engineer and. Can I sit down?
Yeah, get comfortable. Don't get too comfortable, it's getting late, I'm going to fall asleep.
I'm way past my bedtime. So really, what I'm advocating for, what I'm trying to advocate for is, and we talked about this, I think a month or two ago, we were talking about this, there was a suggestion about sun nav in Oxford, there's a lot of rows of arbor buddies down there. So I looked at some of that. So really, the top page is what, what I'm advocating for. The red is, I took a picture from my house and I tried to, using some elevations to simulate kind of where the berm is going to be, which is in the red.
Did you make this?
Yes. And in the, in the, the trees are, so the stipulation on the modification is eight to 10-foot arbor buddies, so I simulated 10-foot arbor buddy. And what I'm advocating for is on the top page, which is, so the, on the plan, there's a double row, so this is a double row with 10 arbor buddies each in the offset. The, the sticking point is, on the second page, is the project engineer, he's saying that what I'm kind of proposing is they're too close. And the second page is a simulation of what it would look like with them and the spacing that he's kind of advocating for. So just to give you an idea, it's, it's on the third page. So what I'm advocating for is these arbor buddies to be really no closer than about nine and a half feet. And, and that's up there, that's the diagonal. So on page three, figure three, you can see the front flat, that's kind of facing it, so they're 10 feet apart, and I used an offset, the stagger row. so they're 10 feet apart. And I used an offset, the staggered row offset is eight feet. So there's a front row, then the second row is eight feet back, and then those are staggered in between. So just some simple math, that's 9.43 feet between them on the diagonal. So I guess I'm, I don't want to say confused, but left kind of scratching my head, I mean, just drive around and look at rows of arborvitae, and they tend to be a lot closer than 10 feet apart. There was also, again, communicating with Mr. Menaric, there was a concern about, about salt. Arborvitae tend to be sensitive to salt. And, again, looking at the plans, the modification, the arborvitae are really no closer than 30 feet, and they're elevated. So it's not like these are going to be on the side of the road. So I guess, again, I feel like a little bit of pebble in the shoe here, but I know once this kind of gets closed out, trying to, and things get put in, it's going to be, it's going to be impossible to get any changes made. So I'm just trying to kind of advocate for this so that, and I know it's going to pull things up, but to kind of get it done, I don't want to say get it done right, but have a decent screen there that there's a, there's a chance in five years it'll grow, you know, maybe double in height, and there'll be a pretty good screen there.
Did you consider the trees getting moved too in your drawings, or...
So I intentionally did not include the trees, because the trees are deciduous, so during the winter, you really, you get sun screening effect.
Yeah.
It'll give you that layering effect.
A little bit, yeah.
At least you get that feel of something, yeah.
Sure. But the spacing that the project engineer is advocating for, I mean, those are, those trees are going to have to get gigantic before they, you know, the base fills out enough where it's kind of blocking the grasses.
Do you have a number?
Sorry?
Do you have a number? Eight feet and a half, seven?
So the simulation on the front is listed, it's shown in figure three on page three, so there, it's 20, 20 trees, because that tabletop is 120 feet long. So with the staggered rows, it's 20 trees, 10 in the front, 10 in the back, and the spacing would be, you know, it's about 10 feet between trees.
Isn't that what they have?
Well, so on the...
They're proposing...
They're proposing...
12 to 15.
Yeah, and then the, again, talking through Mr. Menaric, it was, the engineer felt that 12 was going to be the maximum, that he's being told 12 is going to be the maximum that's kind of allows the tree to grow healthy. But it, again, driving around, looking at other hedges people, if you're spacing these, you know, 12 feet on the diagonal, and, oh, sorry, there's 12 trees, actually, we're going to see...
And I understand it too, because you, you want to plant trees and you want the, them to block out where you don't want to see, but at the same time, you do want healthy trees, so just trying to find that fine line.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm definitely an arborist, but, you know, I have some of these plantings in my yard. I planted them five feet on center, and, and they're, you know, they're, they're growing together, they're not, you know, unhealthy, but I think just the, what the project engineer is opposing, I think it's like, if anybody has arborvitae in their yard, putting them, you know...
These are a large variety, I think they're talking about, maybe like eight feet or something. I mean, I know the varieties.
Yeah, and again, what I'm kind of...
You don't want to be too close.
Yeah, what I'm advocating for, I mean, they're no closer than nine and a half feet.
Right. What are they showing now, two feet?
Um, so showing now is on the, so it's two rows, so if it's 12, it's six in each row, which would put the front row, so the kind of tree-to-tree on the front row would be 20 feet apart.
Yeah, it's not enough.
And then the second row would be staggered, so you would get...
You get it, yeah, right. So like, not enough, not enough. Good catch-up.
So the board be receptive to asking the engineer to consider Mr. Nettle's proposal for the plantings?
Yeah.
Through the chair, I may, I noticed that too, 12 to 15 in the plan, and thought to myself, if they only put 12, then that's going to be pretty sparse. And, as you say, there's one time to do it. It is an additional cost, but...
But something to the scale.
Yeah, yeah, it's...
And just if I may, and I went back, because I, sometimes my memory isn't very good, I went back and re-watched the April 10th meeting, and Mitch Roush was, was on the call. He basically said, I agree, he said, we're going to put, he was referring to the, that large hill that was taken out, that was covered with trees, that they want to force to remove. He said, we're going to put back pretty much as close to as is. I don't know if we can put the trees back at that height, but we will be putting trees back up there as directly. So, I mean, it sounded, he was pretty open to like, okay, what we have to do to remedy this.
Yeah, yeah, I would approach them, Mr. Menoy, with these fantastic drawings, sketches, the neighbor's concerned that it might not be enough, and push for as much as we can.
Cool.
Mr. Menaric?
I think you need to take into account the experts' opinion on root structures too, on the tabletop. You could plant them two feet apart, and if they're all dead in a year, then we've accomplished absolutely nothing. So I think you need to let the experts weigh in on the proper spacing as well. Maybe the engineer's 10 to 12 is a little too excessive. It could be reduced, more trees, but there is a fine line.
Yeah.
Root structure on a tabletop.
But what were you asking for? Nine or so?
Uh, so the, with the 20 trees, the closest they would be center-to-center would be nine and a half.
Nine and a half.
Nine and a half.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
And I think the developer needs to weigh in on too, because he's supplying the trees. Mitch, you have any comment?
No, I didn't, eh.
Mitch Roush will play.
Used to seeing you in the machine or on the TV. You didn't recognize those?
Mr. This.
Yes, sir.
Number one, I'd like to know which engineer the gentleman was speaking with, so I can go back and talk to him about the spacing and everything that he has planned for this.
He talked already.
Directly?
Uh, so as I stated, uh...
He was talking to me, I was talking to Tom.
Okay. This information does not come to me other than tonight, so this is a little monkey wrench in my plans, so I just need to find out. So I've got to go back and talk to the deals engineer and figure out where they're at. And he is correct, I did say that. My goal was to put this back as it was, because it wasn't supposed to come out to begin with. So I had an overzell superintendent, and I've got to fix it and put it back, so that's my goal. So I need to figure out, working with the board, working with the neighbors, and my developer, what we can do to do this. So that's all I needed to find out.
Okay.
But we're giving it...
Yeah. Well, it might be changing, so...
Rough and tough.
My, I'm sorry, one, one question.
Yeah.
Part of this is, is the screening for the houses across the street. There's some light noise that they're picking up, there's probably some ambient noise from, right now there isn't anything down there at night, but there will be trucks down there when it does get leased. So my question is, can I go forward with demoing the area that I have, building the berm, and then when the tree plantings plan comes back and is fully approved, I can come back in and put those in? Because I'm not planting season, I can't plant until the earliest August 15th, or else everything would die. That starts the screening process.
Yeah, that's on the site plan, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so you should be able to build your berm. It's on the site plan.
That's fair.
What are your thoughts, Matt?
I agree. I mean, you have to be able to build a berm right, and then do the planting when it's grown.
Yeah. At least that berm is something for now.
Right.
Better than nothing. Yeah, you, it's not good to plant trees in the middle of summer, especially in these conditions that we're having. Yeah, I think that's fair, and I think, I think we can come up, or everyone can come up with a number on how many and what we want to do.
That'll give sufficient time for them to go back and revise the plan, present it, and make sure everybody's satisfied with it.
Yeah, it's not going to be planting season for, until next time, at least anyway, so I think, yeah, there is time to figure it out, so...
August 15th was the earliest I got, so there's, roughly.
Still seems kind of early, but...
It came from my land.
Yeah.
The next meeting is the 15th?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll talk, we'll have you guys work it out, keep working it out, and come up with some, a plan that works for everybody, and especially with the neighbor's concerns.
All right. We'll, we'll start on the berm, and we'll discuss the plantings and see what we can come up with then. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll talk, we'll meet again next, next month.
Okay.
I'll try to go quick.
Yes.
This is Parker, ladies and gentlemen, sir, let's talk, talk to each other. He said he has, he has hired somebody to do the work with, with the trees up. I told him about the tree giant, and he's like, yeah, so...
Bob, we're just trying to get our conversations done very quickly.
So, that's, he's been calling me all week, I didn't know what it was.
So I went by there, well, last two days, we're down in Coop, right by there, and can he move now his materials out of the area where those trees are going to go? Just move it back. I mean, it's the fact is, they're sitting where the landscaping is going to go, so forward the property. Take his forklifts and just move them back, at least away, it just, it's like in the face of where those things were going to go, so I think he should just move them back.
Okay.
That's pretty simple.
And then, Louis Solar, we had a site construction monitoring report for your packets. They're working on Basin's three and four buildings. They're actually getting them in pretty quickly, and they're actually preserving some of the, the grassy areas until, as part of Basin's four, until they finish. It's actually coming along quite well, and it's just a site's kind of update.
Very well.
White reservoir update. Bud Pace met with Doug Bush from Lennard, not Lennard, Haley Ward, and he provided a report of items that he needs to button up before he submits for his run acceptance, which he's currently working on now. So, just update on that. Otherwise, I talked to Sutton Douglas Development owner today about getting his land slot, land transfer recorded. He hasn't recorded it yet. Supposed to have it recorded, but we haven't yet. We gave it to him, get it June, and he hasn't recorded it yet, so it needs to be recorded. I guess there was a minor update that needed to be done on the front page, corrected. It needs to get recorded. That would be nice, and then we'll schedule the pre-construction meeting so we get that project started. Otherwise... Oh, master plan update. We don't have any updates from the last meeting, because we didn't meet, but our next meeting is July 31st. We'll have a meeting with C. Murphy C. for the first time.
We will.
Good. I'll be back on Monday, the 29th, to discuss the closing agenda that day.
I'm going to add the earth removal bylaw to the list, by the way.
Because we've been talking about that for some time.
I think it's broken. Something's broken.
Yeah, it is, absolutely.
You also have to do the scenic grove one at some point.
Yeah, scenic grove.
Just add it to the list, let us know. We'll toss it about.
All right. All right. Was anyone able to look at the minutes? First, I'm seeing them, so you can do those for next meeting. We just have some signatures going around. For any other, any else on the board? All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, made by a lot of people. I'll give it to Mr. Preston, I'll give it to Mr. Preston, and seconded by Mr. Socrat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.